The city of Eureka. I'm so glad you can all make it today. And can we start off, please, with a roll call?
Mayor Seaman?
Here.
Councillor Costellano?
Here.
Councillor Moulton?
I'm here.
Councillor Arroyo?
Here.
Councillor Bauer?
Here.
Councillor Bergel?
Here.
All right. Thank you very much. And as I said, the last meeting, I will share the honor of leading the pledge. And I'd like to ask Councillor Member Bergel today, would you mind leading the Pledge of Allegiance?
Sure.
Thank you very much.
My flag is not wanting to come up. Hold on.
Please rise.
Yeah, I don't have a flag tonight. I'm sorry.
Oh, no. Well, picture it in your mind, friends. Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, individual, visible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And now we will move on. We did not have a closed session today, so there'd be nothing to report out. And we're going to move on to the mayor's announcements. I would like to start with some of the things that we've been working on. And also, I want to start by recognizing we have Planning Commissioner Rich Ames, who I am very sad to say passed away. And so he has been on the Planning Commission since 2013. And we are all very grateful for the time he spent with us and very saddened to hear that he won't be with us anymore and to hear his passing. So we're sending out all of our condolences and best wishes to his family. And he has also some recommendation that he received from the Planning Commission as well that was passed on to him on his retirement from that commission. So I know a lot of you guys knew Rich. And I'm sure we all are wanting to pass on our good thoughts and warmest wishes to his family. Does anybody have anybody, anything to say to add about Rich that they wanted to? This is kind of impromptu, so nobody was expecting it. All right.
I'll add something. Sorry, I was struggling with my phone. I just wanted to share appreciation for his years of dedicated service to the city of Eureka. And I really appreciate people like him who have brought thoughts that are different from my own. I know it's just really nice to have the diversity of thought and perspective from community members in our appointed positions, and I'm really grateful for that. So I wanted to give that appreciation and thanks to his family also for the support of his dedicated service.
Thank you. And Councillor Member Bergel?
Well, this is kind of a shock, really. I had no idea. And I would, wow, I would agree with the things Councillor Arroyo said. But I would also just like to say that Rich was a character. He gave a whole new meaning to the word "character." And no matter what he was doing, he was passionate and he had his own ideas about it. And there are just so many things that I will remember about him from, you know, when I was pregnant with my daughter, I used to work for his best friend. And there's just so many, so many gifts people give us in our lives that we kind of lose sight of until something like this happens. So I have a lot of appreciation for the time that I did have with him and the service he did in the city. And I find myself sitting here a little bit sad, so.
I'm sorry. Yeah, it's a little shocking. And he did leave a legacy on the commission. He got to work through the general plan and he got to work through some new zoning codes. And so he made an impact and he will be missed by many people, I'm sure. For other business, I would like to announce that I do have a contractor for the Traffic Safety Commission, our task force. And we're working on the final details, so I'll be able to talk about that and hopefully have a meeting scheduled by the next time we get together. And also, staff did introduce the idea of the Traffic Safety Task Force to the Transportation Safety Commission. And Caroline Griffith has volunteered to represent the commission on the task force. So I'm very happy to have her joining us, as well as our staff members, Director Gervin, Police Chief Watson, and Brittany Powell from the police station as well, who does their public information. So that is moving forward, and I wanted everybody to know. Finally, I attended the Chamber of Commerce Dinner last week. And I wanted to congratulate some of our local businesses and individuals who are honored at that event, including just my type Letterpress, who's down in Old Town. They were not honored for Best Small Business. Recology was then recognized for the large business. Six Rivers Brewing Company was recognized for extraordinary business. U.S. Vets Deliver was recognized for an Impact Award for a for-profit business. And the Boys and Girls Club of the Redwoods was recognized for an Impact Award for nonprofit or government. And also, I would like to just really congratulate Greg Foster from the Redwood Region Economic Development Commission and Leila Roberts from the Small Business Development Center, who have been working almost a year, a year in March, on the COVID Economic Resiliency Consortium, providing information, funding opportunities, and just anything they can to help out our small businesses through COVID. So I'm really happy. I was happy to see those awards and would like to congratulate them as well and to congratulate the chamber for pulling off the dinner in the way that everybody's learning how to pull off things. It was virtually, but it was still very well done. And with that, I will move on to our next item, which is the Black History Month Proclamation. And I have asked Councillor Member Costellano if she would like to read that.
Great. And I see Sharon Blank is here from the Eureka NAACP. Hi, Sharon. Thanks for being here to receive the proclamation.
Thank you for inviting me.
Okay, so in recognition of February as Black History Month, February 2nd, 2021. Whereas Black History Month is an annual celebration of achievements of African Americans in a time for recognizing the central role of blacks in U.S. history. And whereas Black History Month originated from Negro History Week, which was inspired by historian Carter G. Woodson, as well as other prominent African Americans in U.S. history, and celebrated the second week of February 1926 that coincide with the birthdays of renowned leaders Abraham Lincoln and Frederick Douglass. And whereas since 1976, every U.S. president has officially designated the month of February as Black History Month. And whereas Black History Month is also an occasion to commemorate the countless contributions of African Americans, many of whom lived through and surrounded the scourge of segregation, racial prejudice, and discrimination to enrich every fiber of American life. And whereas the fabric of our nation is richer and stronger due to the significant influence and contributions of all inspirational African-American leaders, including sports legends Hank Aaron, Muhammad Ali, Jesse Owens, and Jackie Robinson; to human rights and political activists Harriet Tubman, Rosa Parks, Sojourner Truth, Malcolm X; and Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.; to literary figures Ira Aldridge, Maya Angelou, Ida B. Wells, Barnett, Phyllis Wheatley, and Walter Francis White; to statesmen Edward W. Brooke, Benjamin O. Davis Jr., Thurgood Marshall, Colin Powell, and Hiram Revels; musical icons John Coltrane, Duke Ellington, and Aretha Franklin, among many, many others. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Eureka does hereby proclaim February as Black History Month and encourages all residents to join us in celebrating this special month.
Thank you.
I just want to say, you know, in part, just very quickly, listed off some really great people. And I also think it's important to honor the people who were not named and haven't been named, but who have done significant things for their cultures and for their communities, but never had the opportunity to become famous. And if it's okay, I just wanted to show this quote from Angela Davis that really guides me sometimes on council. And that's, "You have to act as if it were possible to radically transform the world, and you have to do it all the time." And so just thank you to all of the people in our own community and in this nation that have provided black leadership.
I'm glad you mentioned that, Leslie, because I was thinking the same thing, that there are so many more people that we celebrate, but there are so many people whose names we'll never know who have helped our country, sometimes willingly, sometimes unwillingly, and sometimes unwittingly, that have made our country better for being here. So Sharon, I'm super glad that you're here today. And I'm going to give you a minute to talk, but I hope you'll indulge us for just a minute. And we do a lot of proclamations, but I felt like I wanted to make sure that we really did something special with this one. And so I have asked each council member to come up with a 30-second celebration of somebody they would like to honor tonight. And so I'll go ahead and start with Carter Woodson. He was the son of formerly enslaved parents, and he struggled to start an education, but he ended up with a doctorate in history from Harvard University in the early 1900s. And his life pursuit was to celebrate the contributions of black people to our history, believing that the world needed a better understanding of their contributions to counter racism and misinterpretations about them. This month, when we celebrate those who have made an impact on any number of fields, like we mentioned in the proclamation, including science and art and sports, history, business, and more, in my experience, I have not heard Carter Woodson's name often enough. Because part of his rich legacy in recognizing the contributions of the black community is the existence of Black History Month as we know it today, which is the evolution of the work that he started in 1915. So I thought that was pretty cool, and I wanted to share that story about him. And I will invite Councillor Moulton to go next.
Thank you. And thank you for the prompt, Mayor Seaman. I appreciate this opportunity. I've written mine down in the hopes that I can get through it. The person that I would like to acknowledge is named Njari Shakur. Back in Houston, I was working around issues of police brutality and working against the death penalty when the state of Texas was killing one person about every week. I found the Texas death penalty abolition movement, or the movement, and its leader, Njari Shakur. She was a great-grandmother, a community leader, a fearless warrior, and a personal mentor. When I showed up, this young, wide-eyed, white girl, and said I wanted to help, she put me to work. She taught me about approaching the fight with humility and about using my privilege to protect people whose skin made them a target. I could go on about the amazing work that she did in advocacy. She adopted every young man in town. And when someone was arrested and they didn't have any family, she was the one who sat in court. She was putting her social security check into people's commissaries. She was fighting the death penalty, marching up and down with us young kids. And in honor of Black History Month, I would like to acknowledge Njari Shakur and all of the women like her, fighting to build a safer, more just world for their grandbabies from the ground up.
Thank you. Councillor Member Bergel?
Thank you. I actually thought that I would honor a local person. Jim Howard. Jim Howard was, I'm going to read his obituary. He was a wonderful man and a man of great humility. And the things I remember most about him were passing the basket around at the Rotary and just always being kind. So Jim Howard, former Eureka council member and businessman, died November 5th, 2016. Jim Howard was born in Athens, Georgia on December 1st, 1915. Jim was the son of James A. Howard and Julia Palmer Howard. James Howard Senior died in a construction accident. His mom later married, and he worked on the weekends. He went to the Eureka City Schools here, and he worked on the weekends at his stepdad's shoe shine shop, which is just amazing. He bought the shoe shop, shoe shine shop in 1954. There's actually a plaque out near Sea Grill that honors him. He was a city council member from 1972 to 1990. So he was a city council member for a long time, very involved in our community, very involved in many things. As I was reading through all the different things that he did, it was phenomenal. He was on the board of directors for the Eureka Chamber, Humboldt Resource Center, longtime member of the Humboldt Tip Club, not tip-top tip-club, and just a great person. And I don't think that the words that I'm saying are enough to really showcase just what a spectacular person he was. He came from nothing. He was a shoe shine guy. He ended up being a council member and really just grew into himself and was a great example for many of us, and his humility will live on. So thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Member Arroyo?
Well, when invited to do this, I first started with some people who were close to me in my life, but I decided to really highlight someone I've been reading a lot about lately. It's the, our new Secretary of Defense, General Lloyd Austin, who's someone I've been reading their biography and learning all about his military career. I think because I remain on active-duty orders and I'm surrounded by military folks, it's become more of an area of focus lately. It's how I always spend my days, is around people who are led by the policy directions that are ultimately going to be decided by General Austin. And so I wanted to know about this person, and he's had an incredibly distinguished career. And he is now doing the important and difficult work of making really big policy decisions about the defense of our nation and our domestic and international operations and defense. And I think that's important, something that many of us probably don't think about day in, day out in Humboldt County. And I think, you know, he's absolutely a hero to many now, being the first black Secretary of Defense. And, you know, it's an incredible achievement. And I also just want to acknowledge the many black indigenous and people of color in the armed forces, many people that I have the honor of working with and serving alongside. It's a historically, like, difficult area. You know, I know my own family history is that, you know, I have many family members who served when our forces were still segregated and were treated unfairly. So I know that it is a difficult history, but also an important one to acknowledge. So that was my choice for this recognition. And I love that we're acknowledging a wide spectrum of leaders in our communities.
Thank you. And Councillor Member Bauer?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I chose one of my heroes, Neil deGrasse Tyson, who, you know, we've had some tough years for science. I think we all know that, past few years. And I don't think there's a Dr. Tyson. I don't think it's anybody that has, that explains science, makes it accessible for everybody as good as he does, his explanations of the universe. He's an astrophysicist, you know. And I love talks about the universe and space. And he just makes it easy to understand. And that's so hard to do with his subject and with science in general. And being a scientist, I respect him more than anyone just for his ability to educate everyone about the need for science. And he's been a real fighter for science in the past four years. And so huge respect for, and he's a great human being, all-around awesome human. So that's, you know, I hope we can have more Niels in the future who can maybe encourage people to go into the science field and bring belief into science. Or hopefully, we can get science back into our lexicon of what's real. You know, science is valued and it should guide decision-making. I just appreciate him so much. Thanks for the opportunity to honor him.
Thank you very much. And today, I bought a book. It was just released. So they had to order it for me called Three Mothers. And it's about the moms of Martin Luther King, Malcolm X, and James Baldwin. And it's written by Mayor Tubbs from Stockton, his wife, his name is Anna Malika Tubbs. And it's just a reminder that all these people that we are honoring all had moms that we have to thank as well. And also, I like that story because when I met Sharon, it was working as talking about children and how important it is to take care of our kids. So with that, thank you for everything you do, Sharon. And so what would you like to say?
Thank you. Thank you. So I'm the president of the Eureka NAACP. I just started my second official term. I was interim for a while as well. So I will share the proclamation with members at our next meeting. I will also share it with other black organizations, black-led organizations in the community here, Black Humboldt, the HC Black Music and Arts Association, Building Black Community, Doug Smith, Doug Smith from the African-American Center for Academic Excellence, Aleah Dumphy from CR. She's the director of the Multicultural Center and a leader in this community, as well as Dr. Kentay Johnson, who's the director of Special Programs at CR. I'm in my sixth year here in Humboldt and have only recently started falling in love with Humboldt. And a lot of it has to do with the people and organizations that I just named, as well as the different Native communities from this area. So, and I really want to also just share my appreciation for people talking about people that they knew personally in this tribute to black Americans. You know, I am an early interventionist, so everything is about relationships to me. And I think when you can talk about, you know, the black people in your circle and how they have impacted your life and/or your family's life, I think that comes across at a really deep level. So maybe that can be the focus next year when you provide this proclamation to another black leader in the community to receive. Maybe the focus can be on different black people that you've known within Humboldt during your time here and your relationships with them. And just in closing, again, I appreciate the proclamation. And I just want to put this idea, float this idea by you. I'm 55 years old, and I've only recently decided personally not to refer to February as Black History Month. It took me a while to figure out why it was problematic. And now that I'm doing work with the schools, it's become much clearer. And again, I've been around a lot of people that have a lot more knowledge than I do in other areas and have shared their perspective with me. We are around all year. We have been around since day one. We are not only here for Dr. King's holiday and for February. We're here all the time, which is why the NAACP now has a Black Americans documentary series that is year-round, because we're always here. And the country is only better for us being here. And yes, so, and the other piece I'd like to add, and then I'll stop talking. The other piece I would like to add is when I am, a recent thing that I've started adding when I speak in front of groups, is I provide a very brief land acknowledgement and talk about the honor tax.org website for people to contribute financially. And I've also started adding a statement about the fact that the wealth of this country was built on slavery. I think those two pieces of information need to be said regularly in front of people because we forget the origins of this country. And I think it's very important, if you want to understand people's experience now in the world, to understand our history, the way it actually happened. So just sharing that with you. And thank you again for the proclamation. I assume we'll get something in the mail. And thank you for allowing me to speak for a few minutes. I appreciate it.
We hope you come back other times of the year as well.
Thank you, Susan.
Whenever you have something going on, you let us know. And you know that you're always welcome here. And I think that your idea for next year is a grand one, and it will definitely keep it in mind.
Beautiful. Thank you.
See you soon. Bye-bye. All right. And now we are going to move on to our presentations. And I would like to invite our HR Director, Will Folger, to talk about our diversity and inclusion program.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Will Folger, HR Director for the city. And I'm very pleased to be coming before you today to introduce Fog Break. They are the consultants who are assisting the city on rolling out our diversity plan, which, as you'll recall, has been quite a long time in the works. A quick background on that is we started exploring this idea back in 2018 and 2019. During strategic visioning, it became a priority. And of course, towards the end of 2019 and in early 2020, there was some difficulties with rolling that out because of the pandemic and other issues. But now, here we are, a year later, and we're in earnest rolling that out. We were able to get some good work done during the year of 2020, despite the challenges, and establish a comprehensive report that was put together by Fog Break after a series of meetings with staff members with the city, leadership at the city, and community members and community leaders over the course of many months. It's very comprehensive. And I would like to turn it over to them to kind of explain where we are now and what we're going to be doing moving forward as we prepare for strategic visioning this month and for steps with the plan beyond that. So with that, I will turn it over to Fog Break. Thank you very much.
Thanks so much, Will. We are so glad to be here. I'm going to share my screen. Just want to make sure that everybody can see that. Visible. Some thumbs up. Excellent. All right, all right. So hi, everybody. We just want to thank you so much for this opportunity to provide a brief report on the Diversity and Inclusion Initiative that we began with the city and the work that we plan to do the remainder of the year. We are at the start of the journey with the city of Eureka, but we have made great headway. Like a lot of communities in the U.S. right now, we understand that Eureka faces many systemic forces around race and equity that are deeply entrenched. And what we aim to do is address those in a comprehensive way. Today, we're just going to share some of the highlights, what we discovered, what we've done so far, and what's to come. So we have a short amount of time, so we're just going to hop right into it. So we're going to begin with a little bit of a roadmap of what we're going to be covering this evening. First, it's going to be an introduction of who we are and then a brief overview of the project in its entirety. And then we'll hone in on the Phase One that we've just completed with a summary and then also highlights some areas for improvement, key findings that we have, and then we'll move on to next steps. So who is Fog Break? A little about us. At the end of the day, we're educators and advocates for equity and inclusion. We train thousands of people in many organizations and municipalities on systems of oppression and bias. But what we aim to achieve with each initiative is But what we aim to achieve with each initiative is truly a partnership. Uh, with our clients to create a powerful culture of equity and inclusion. Uh, we want to have that displayed within the entire city staff with the intent that it'll cascade to the surrounding community. The work starts internally and that's what we're focusing on and then it manifests externally. So let's take a quick moment to cover the different phases of our initiative in its entirety and then we'll hop into the details. So the first phase is the discovery phase and what this is really about is getting a clear picture of where we are, what we call the current reality. Uh, we engaged in consultation, information gathering, which culminated culminated into our initial report, which you guys should have received. Uh, and what we'll be tapping on a little bit today. Then we move into the foundations phase and what this is about is what is our foundations? Where do we root ourselves? What is our mission, our vision and our values when we look through the lens? Of diversity and inclusion. What this says is who we are and who we're not and what those behaviors look like and don't look like. We then move on into the education phase, uh, where we'll be having workshops on racial justice, implicit bias and procedural justice. And then the implementation phase where we have self guided learning programs on leadership for inclusion and then also a final report. Uh, we'll be engaging in community events and ongoing consultation uh in that implementation phase. So we've completed phase one and want to provide a summary of what it entailed. Uh, but first, let's just share the goals. First and foremost, strengthen connection between coworkers uh towards a common goal of more uh just and equitable city and workplace. We want to recognize and establish the importance of equity and inclusion, the why and gain a vision for what Eureka can be if we really took this initiative. Absolutely to heart, provide a space to listen to leaders and rising leaders about their thoughts on the efforts and areas to focus. And then gather information about Eureka and the experiences and sentiments of the city in regards to equity uh and inclusion. This again is the current reality. And this really is what informs the work that we're going to be doing. We want to make sure that it's not a cookie cutter. It's something that's pulled from those individuals within the city. So here's the nuts and bolts, our methods uh to achieve these goals. We started off in August, actually, uh, we facilitated a kickoff event and a listening session. Uh, with community leaders and rising leaders. The next day, we had another listening session. And then over the next few weeks, we conducted in-depth interviews with many city leaders and employees uh to gather some significant data. In addition, we developed, executed and analyzed uh custom online uh survey regarding equity and inclusion. Uh, there's a reason that we call this the discovery phase. We want to gather as much information as possible. So here's some pictures from the kickoff. It was a great event. It was great to meet you in person. I know all of us are living in this COVID world. Where we are stuck in boxes and squares like the Brady Bunch, but uh, this was a powerful time. Uh, what we want to do is just share some of the highlights and kind of as a as a note, this is a high level bird's eye perspective. Uh, each of these are discussed in great detail in the report, so we definitely recommend if you have not taken time uh to read this, we just want to give you today a sense of what we learned. Uh, and here are top five kind of key findings. First is most respondents feel proud to work for the City of Eureka and feel there's a genuine effort towards diversity and inclusion. There is a need for unifying the vision around equity and inclusion championed by leadership in both words and deeds. A strong indicator uh of the in-group, out-group dynamic and respondents described favoritism in the form of a good old boys network, uh, this who you know. The city's work to uh to do in reaching out and building trust with people of color who work for the city. And the fifth is protocols for addressing and confronting explicit racism and for building bridges with the marginalized communities in the greater. Uh, community of Eureka are needed. So let's let's hop into this. Uh, the good news, the great stuff that we've heard. Positive. People love Eureka. They love working for the City of Eureka. There's a lot going right. There's goodwill within the community and within the city as a workplace. Uh, we see in the survey eighty percent uh this response eighty percent are proud uh to work here. Even more specifically, if we kind of look into the lens of equity and diversity, there is a sense of progress. Some of the interview, he said the following. The city is demonstrating an honest and humble desire to meet the needs of historically marginalized people. It feels like momentum is beginning to build in the right direction and that we are making progress and hopeful, even though we are far from our goals. Uh, this sense of movement, this sense of seeing that there's an effort says a lot about. This kind of this desire to move the needle. It's not something that's just articulated from the top, but we see that there is an effort. Obviously, the fact that Fog Break is here is a testament to that in a big way. Another key finding is that that we kind of saw pop up despite the positive sentiments. There's certainly revealed that Eureka's leadership. Should increase its effort to establish in both word and deed a unified inspiring vision for Eureka that connects to its values to the work of inclusion. Uh, and equity and kind of an example to to show this, we saw some trends. When it came to our surveys on around leadership, these certain questions, we looked at these five questions on leadership and found that a good majority. Kind of took a position of neutrality, right? To and if you look at the gray boxes, that shows the kind of out of a one to five Liker scale, they chose three. And essentially, this is a non-answer or a decision not to take the position. If we look specifically at this last question. Uh, it says the city leadership communicates a vision that motivates me. Uh, we see that forty percent agree, which is great. Twenty-five percent disagree, but thirty thirty-six percent don't know. And like I said, there's a trend of this kind of one-third uh that doesn't know. This is indicative of a lack of clear engagement and influence on the part of the leadership. The good news is is that neutrality means that there is a it's easy to kind of tip that scale. By really focusing in and honing in on a clear message of what diversity looks like. And also having leadership that absolutely champions, not just supports diversity inclusion, not just harass for it, but truly is a champion for it. Both in word and deed. Another finding that we found was uh there's a strong indicator of an in-group, out-group dynamic and respondents described favoritism in the form of an old boys network or who you know. This is one of the pervasive and more salient themes that rose from the in-person interviews and focus groups, this feeling of an in-group. Uh, sometimes referred to as it says here, good old boy, which kind of controls the culture of the city and also who gets uh hired and promoted. Highlight we wanted to take was, uh, it says thirty-seven percent of respondents agreed with this statement. I feel who you know is more important. Than your work for hiring and promotion. Uh, and we found that there's a significant support for this uh experience. And the anecdotal evidence that came up again and again, and the topics of nepotism in group. Kind of favoritism, all boys network and uh gender discrimination. So definitely things that we want to address. Some of the respondents uh in our interview said some of the following things. It seems like. Everyone knows each other or knows their parents or grew up together. I've applied for positions that have been given to others because they were related by marriage or blood. Uh, Eureka is known for the good old boys mentality. There are families uh and family names that have been around Eureka since the late uh eighteen hundreds. Another one says within the city, it's who you know, who hobnobs with others, social circles, cliques. I get that people have a tendency to migrate with people of the same social status, but it's all about you are so and so's son. As a female, I see my male coworkers, uh, even though my same age fit very well into the social circle of other male supervisors. However, no matter how hard I try to relate or shoot the breeze with them, I often feel shut down yet again and disconnected. Uh, we see that these in-groups and out-groups are pervasive uh and can be shaped by discrimination through gender, social status, familial connections and familiarity, whether conscious or unconscious. The awareness is one of the most important things. A silver lining that I want to share is that one of the respondents mentioned that the new crew in HR. Has gone through leaps and bounds to make the hiring process more regimented. Clearly, what we're just saying is that there's work to do, right? Uh, and we'll talk a little bit about some courses that we do on recruiting and hiring, uh, that'll be really, really helpful to move this forward. Another key finding, the city has work to do in reaching out and building trust with people of color who work for the city. Uh, we found that forty-eight percent of respondents agree the city could do a better job on the development and retention of a diverse workforce. And some of the anecdotal evidence, we heard people would say, when I first started here, the first day, I felt alone. I thought I'm not going to fit in here. This place is all white. Like if you're feeling disenfranchised, isolated, not seen, underappreciated, you won't go to the employee recognition dinner. People talk about that a lot. And if you don't feel a part of that, it's a problem fitting in with the team. If I express my true feelings, you'd be able to pinpoint who I am and I don't feel safe enough to do that. I don't want to rock the boat. But no, I don't feel accepted. Now, these are personal experiences. Uh, and what I want to do real quick is just kind of explain what this can look like. There's a there's a great quote that says diversity is being invited to the party. So being invited to the party is the first step. Inclusion is being asked to dance where you feel a part of the party. And belonging is having your music on the playlist. Where not only are you invited, not only are you asked to dance, you feel that you're a part of it. The culture is inclusive of you and it allows that feeling of uh non-detachment. Uh, and the final key finding uh is that protocols for addressing and confronting explicit racism for building bridges within the marginalized communities. In the greater community of Eureka are needed. Uh, we've had some experiences even in between uh the first part of the work that we did with some uh explicit things that have happened. Uh, in terms of explicit racism, uh, here's some of the things that people have shared in our interviews. I've experienced racism walking down the street. A couple of years ago, we got eggs thrown on us. Uh, my friends and I decided not to call the cops. There's a place called Inward Hill and one fire department employee said that full name in front of all the employees. During a city council meeting, the meeting got Zoom bombed by a racist uh by racist things over the screen. We immediately cut off the meeting, but racism. Is our national situation and people feel more liberty to express their ideas in more overt and hurtful ways. I'm a Mexican. My coworker was Mexican and Filipino and we got lots of derogatory remarks from older men from the community, such as, do you have any white people here that I can talk to there? That happened all the time. So these are things that are happening and and what we're looking at is just what is happening. The good news is that there is room to create protocols and we'll be training leaders on establishing behavior and protocols for explicit racism. The truth is what our goal is is to know what to do when this happens, how to do it, how to act and when to act. This is crucial. Uh, we'll be doing a workshop on managing difficult conversations as well. The the most important thing, and this ties to what we'll be talking about in terms of the vision and values, is that when we are clear on what we allow, what we are about and what we are not. This really empowers us to create a more stronger culture. Real quick, I just want to explain something about what we looked at. Sometimes this this can be difficult to hear, right? But the truth is is that our current reality, knowing where we stand, if I'm at a mall, my goal is to get to JCPenney, I have to first know where I am, right? That's the current reality. The goal then is to create a clear vision of what it is that we want to create. What could, yes, there's work that's been done, being done. Eighty percent feel good about this place. What can we do to make it better? That's the vision. And if you imagine a rubber band tied around the vision, the current reality, what you have is something called positive tension. It's the desire that that pressure, that pull to move to make this vision a reality. And what we've done is we've gathered that understanding of the current reality. And then we want to get to movement to where we can start to push towards that vision. Real quick, we're gonna share some next steps and then we'll open it up for Q and A. What we're gonna be focusing on now, after this discovery is the mission, vision and values work. The mission, vision and values work, like I said, is about clearing that foundation. Before we build up, we have to dig down into the foundation. That's the discovery phase and then build that foundation so that it can uphold the work that we're gonna be doing next. The vision, values and mission work will be an all-day in-person workshop to develop shared values and create a vision on a statement of who we are as a city. We'll also be leading meeting with leaders and rising leaders to refine the mission and the vision and also define what our values look like, what behaviors elicit diversity inclusion. We look through that lens, how do we know that we're successful at becoming a more diverse and inclusive place? And then we'll also follow do some follow-up work as we finalize that mission, vision and value. So that's the next phase that we're gonna be going into. We look forward to that. And uh, if, thank you for taking the time first to uh hear this and want to open it up for questions and then also Shanti and Christie, if there's anything that you want to add to this, by all means, go ahead.
Okay, does anybody have questions at this point? Um, can I ask, are you gonna be using your PowerPoint again to go back to it or or can we turn it off and then I can see people better?
Go ahead, you can turn it off.
All right, anybody have any questions or uh this time? Councilmember Royal.
Thank you for the great presentation and I appreciate the um. I appreciate the staff and community holding up a mirror um so that we can really take a good look at what what we have and what we need to do. So um, I really am grateful for that. Um, since it seems like we are going to be in a holding pattern for a big community meeting. Um, what are you thinking um could happen to keep this moving in the right direction between now and when we can have a large gathering again?
I'll go ahead and take that. So pretty much we want to keep momentum. Oh, can you hear me? All right.
Yes.
The goal is to keep momentum uh above everything else. We've we've gathered this work and we're gonna be moving into the mission, vision, values, and we're looking at doing that. Around mid-March to end of March. We've done this work on Zoom before. Uh, so there is still a way to really connect uh and make this interactive and that's what the goal is. We want people to still connect. There's breakout groups. There's word clouds, there's polls, uh, there's a lot of movement that you can do despite the fact that you're stuck within a box. Uh, so we want to keep this going and we want to keep it on the forefront of the mind. You know, there's a great quote that says, you have to say something seven times to hear it for the first time. And that's ultimately what we're doing is as we engage in this on a consistent basis, it really starts to become and set into and graft to what it is specifically that we are doing. Uh, when it comes to building a more equitable space at Eureka.
Great, thank you. I hadn't realized that you meant by Zoom. That sounds wonderful and I agree that it can be interactive. And and pretty fun. I think we've kind of gotten a comp of the weirdness, so hopefully folks will feel like that's a welcoming uh way to participate and I'm I'm looking forward to it.
Absolutely. And and a lot of things, the thing that's so great is what we're trying to do is build the community, right? It's not, let's just work on uh being more diverse. Diversity and inclusion is natural. If you think about people that you love, you naturally are there. So what we're trying to do with the city is build that sense of that natural space. What I always say is that my val- one of my values is family. There's no way that I can love anybody more than my family. So what do I do? I pick people up and I place them in my family and they get that auto love. Ultimately, we want to do that with the city itself is when we see, oh, my gosh, we share so many values. Outside of the groups, the in-groups that are unconsciously uh were that we connect in, but also understanding that we share these sub-values. That brings people together and if we tie that to that vision, it really increases the likelihood of that behavior change. Excellent. Anybody else?
And um, this is just a report, so we're, we don't have public comment on it. If you have any comments, you can also make those at this time. Um, I haven't, were you going to in, did Shanti and Christie, would they have something further? They were gonna tell us some more to the presentation?
No, we were just here for to answer questions and just to say hi and.
Participate, okay. I just wanted to. Make sure, thank you for everybody coming tonight. We appreciate the support on that.
Leslie, is it, Leslie, you have something?
Go ahead, Leslie, and then Kim.
Thank you. Um, and just see, I know we didn't get the report until just now, so we actually haven't had the chance to read your report, so I'm. I'm definitely keen to read that full report and um. Yeah, I'm I'm just really appreciating that we're doing this and that, you know, you're. Yeah, and and that we're learning. Um, I would be curious just to know um. Kind of in the the future meetings, kind of like the the breadth, you know, like. Like, I guess, like the degree to which, like, we're talking about, like, city employees and the degree we're talking about the larger community and and then kind of like the space where, you know, obviously. Our employees live in, live in, work in our community, you know, so so there's not really a division between those spaces.
Great. Shanti, you want to get this one?
Um, I think you'll, we we actually provided you with a summary, I believe. There were, there's a summary. Kind of highlight report and then there's the full report, which is forty-three pages, so it's quite comprehensive. You'll see in the full report that um it responses are generally broken out by. Whether the person was a community member or an employee of the city. So I think that should be somewhat um explanatory in the report.
I was kind of asking about future, the the next few or the future work. Will that, you know, will you continue to be kind of straddling both or or how will that be framed?
Well, our focus will um, of course, remain on the city um as a employee, as an employee community. We will, the mission, vision and values work that is with city employees. Somewhat in conjunction with that around the same timing, we were, we're planning on hosting a community meeting, so that's open up to the whole community. Those are both gonna be on Zoom. But in terms of next steps, there's sort of two um parallel um meetings happening.
Councilmember Bergel.
Well, I just wanted to say thank you, thank you, and thank you. Did I say thank you? Yes. You know, it's with awareness that things can change. So I really appreciate how you've dove into this topic and the things that we're learning. And you're right, some of that was really uncomfortable to see. Some of those comments were really uncomfortable to see, but without seeing them, we cannot change them as a community. So I'm really grateful that we're moving forward with this. I'm hopeful for more open dialogue with people's experiences in a safe space. Yeah, because you know what? The time is now. We don't really, I mean, personally, and I think council, you know, I'm not going to speak for everybody. I feel like, though, that we're ready to move forward and change. We're kind of done with this old, old thinking that has kept people stuck and separate. It doesn't really build communities. So I just, I so appreciate just even just the beginnings that I've heard so far, and I'm looking forward to what is going to transpire in the future and the positive changes that will come with just even this little bit of awareness that we've got. So thank you so much.
I just, yeah, one of the things that's so great, there's a wonderful quote. It says, pain pushes till the vision pulls. This says so much about your community, the willingness to look into, to lift, to open the kimono, to really put ourselves in this position. It's the only, it's the barrier to evolution, right? A lot of times, we don't want to see what is existing, and we have this even present within our own lives, right? But then we see it within the community, and we're looking at it. We say, okay, we have a clear depiction. We know where our point A is. Now our point B matters, right? I don't care how clear and how beautiful our point B is, if we don't know our point A, there's no way to get there. And I just, at Fall Break, we were talking about Eureka and this desire, because this conversation, like Will said, happened before the pandemic. It happened before the murder of George Floyd, where this was thrust to the forefront. This was something that was thought about preemptively, and we commend that in a huge way, because it really says that this is something that's important, which also showed up within the survey responses. There's progress that's being made, and greatness in our definition is moving towards greatness. It's not this attainment of this utopian society. It's moving there.
I just had one thing too. When Sharon was talking, she listed a lot of community organizations and individuals she works with in the Black community here locally and with people of color across the board, indigenous groups. Do you have those, a pretty comprehensive list of what we have in this community? I'm sure that you're, that you engage in a lot of folks on a community level. I just wanted to make sure you had all of those resources in case you didn't yet.
Kristi, you can go ahead and answer that.
Yes, I mean, I think we, when we did our, our in-depth interviews, we really reached out and reached to different community groups, and we always ask people for more suggestions and who to talk to. So we're always open for any suggestions. We're in, you know, it's, information gathering phase is ongoing. So we're happy to hear any other suggestions, but I think we did do a pretty comprehensive reach out at the beginning.
It's not that I didn't think you did, but I just wanted to make sure that you, that you felt like you had a good list for us to go from and that you're able to grow it. And Sharon?
Susan, if it's helpful, you could give them my phone number, and I can share my list if that is a helpful thing.
Certainly. How about if I email you, and would you share your list with me? I would like to have it as well.
I can do that as well.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right. It looks like no more questions or comments. I just want to thank you guys for coming. Thank you for working with us through the pandemic. Interesting circumstances, but I think the world has brought a lot of this to our attention and maybe a little bit more to the surface, so that hopefully you'll get some really good, genuine thoughts from people who are thinking about it a lot, who maybe weren't thinking about it before. So we are very happy to have you onboard.
Same. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Maya, was that a goodbye, Miles, or did you want to say something? All right, so we will move on into our next item, which is public comment period.
Mayor, I'm sorry to ask for this right now. Could we take just a couple of minutes? I just, not so long ago, had surgery, and I'm really in pain, so I need just a couple of minutes to take a prescription. I don't want to miss public comment, so I don't want people to think I'm not listening. Could we just take a couple of minutes?
Is that okay with everybody? We could just take like a three-minute break and, okay.
Okay, I'll be really quick. Thank you.
Okay, three minutes. See you soon. So I'm sure you're tired on top of, in pain, so. We are going to move on to the public comment period. Assistant City Manager Powell, do we have any public comment today?
Mayor Seaman, we do not.
All right. Then we will move on to our next item, which is public hearings, and I'd like to invite Director Malar to come out and talk about the fiscal year 2021 fee schedule update. He's laying back. He might have, he might still think we're on a break. Why don't we do this if he stepped away for a minute, which is fine? Can we move on to the consent calendar, and we'll come back to the public hearing? So let's move on to the consent calendar, and does anybody need to pull anything this evening? All right, then can I have a motion?
No, one second. Sorry. Thank you, Mayor. I don't really want to poll. I just want to discuss a couple of topics, B3 and B4.
Then you have to pull them.
Yeah. Let's pull them.
Okay, so we'll pull B3 and B4, and can I have a motion reflecting that?
We need a motion.
I move we accept the consent calendar and pull items B3 and B4.
Have a second?
I'll second.
All right, all in favor, or can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Castellano?
Aye.
Councilmember Moulton?
Aye.
Councilmember Royal?
Aye.
Councilmember Bauer?
Aye.
Councilmember Bergel?
Yes.
Unanimous yes vote. Motion carries.
All right, so let's start with item B3, which is the Prop 68 statewide park development and community revitalization program grant funds. I'm assuming this might be a Director Wood question.
And I. There she is.
Oh, it's a Robin Prassler question.
Director Wood is here.
Okay. Oh, I just, I saw that Robin turned on her.
We're both here for questions.
Excellent. Okay, Councilmember Bauer?
Yeah, I just had, well, I first want to thank, you know, city staff and the community, you know, Common Grounds. It's been a lot of hard work put into getting this, you know, getting something going in Cooper Gulch, and people are excited. And I want to thank you all for that. I think my main question is, this is a resolution, just to kind of support it, but what, you know, what's kind of, or I guess, when is this going to come back to us, to the community as to what are we choosing to tackle through this grant proposal or this RFP?
Donna, do you want me to go ahead and take it over? Go ahead. Okay, great. Thank you, Councilmember Bauer. That is a fantastic question. So this specific resolution brought to council tonight is actually part of the grant application. It's a requirement, so just a formality to show that our governing body supports the application regarding when the community can find out what the project proposal is. Within the next six weeks, basically, we are in the process right now, working with Cooper Gulch Common Grounds, reviewing public input, and working with our consultant to define the scope. And we do plan to have a conceptual design to release to the public no later than the grant deadline of March 12. So cooper gulch park improvements dot com is our landing page for all updates on the project. So as soon as we identify the very specific scope and design, we will release that. But for the purposes of the resolution tonight, we just provided kind of a basic summary of what park improvements we likely will see. But again, it wasn't finalized, so we couldn't attach any other fun details for you guys tonight, unfortunately.
Awesome. Well, that's all I wanted to hear. I appreciate your work, and I look forward to seeing conceptual design and whatever we can do to get it funded, let us know.
Excellent. Would you like to make a motion then to approve that item?
I'd like, what's the item again? I don't have that.
Item B3.
Kim's got a question.
Oh.
Kansas, as a point of order, since this has been brought forward, and we've had a brief report, and now that it's been discussed and we've asked questions, do we open it up for a public comment before we vote and have our comments? Isn't that generally process?
Just checking. Okay.
Yes, we.
Okay.
We do.
Do we have any questions from? Then I'll bring it back for comments or motion, which we have a motion now, I think. Part of a motion.
Did you make the motion?
Yeah, I did, but it was pretty choppy.
You want to remake it?
Yeah, I'll, I'm trying to pull it up here. I'll make the motion to support a resolution. See if I can pull it up real quick. Nothing really matters.
Power, you can just state that you recommend staff's recommendation, or you support staff's recommendation?
That's my recommendation. I support staff.
Do we have a second on that?
I'll second that, and I want to say thank you to Robin and Donna for all your great work.
Yes.
Thank you very much, and can we have a vote on this item, please?
Councilmember Castellano?
Aye.
Councilmember Moulton?
Aye.
Member Royal?
I just saw her screen go away. I don't know if she got kicked off.
It looks like it. I don't see her on here. Our recorder is absent. Councilmember.
I see her. She's back. Oh, it was frozen for me. Are you asking for my vote?
Yes.
Was the motion what I think it was to approve item, the item?
Yes, it was.
I would like to make a comment, though.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to encourage, you know, this has been kind of a a long process of refining and coming up with ideas, and I would just say, you know, Councilmember Bauer, I just want to encourage you to reach out to staff if you have specific ideas or questions about it, just because I think it sounds like now is the window of time to get additional thoughts and kind of merge them with the community input that has happened so far. So I don't think that there's any reason not to reach out to staff and convey any ideas or concerns.
All right, I'm sorry, I probably shouldn't have let a comment in the middle of a vote.
Councilmember Bauer?
Aye.
And Councilmember Bergel? Unanimous yes vote. Motion carries.
Thank you very much. And now also, it was item B4, the Federal Communications Commission letter that you wanted to pull as well as Councilmember Bauer. And I think we'll have Director Slattery address that if you have any questions to that.
No. Mayor Seaman, and good evening, Mayor and council members. Is there anything specific? I give a little brief introduction to it. This letter was originally put forward due to some of the concerns that the community member, as well as Access Humboldt have had with the negotiations related to Cox Media, who are the owners of the local NBC and CBS channels here. And they were having negotiations with Suddenlink slash Altis. They ended up in a stalemate, and we lost reception of those channels for a while while they were negotiating. More recently, since after the agenda was posted, those negotiations have been resolved, and NBC and CBS should be back on Suddenlink. However, the overall intent of the letter is still relative. These same issues are probably going to arise with satellite providers and Cox Media, which has been ongoing for satellite subscribers for a long time. It hasn't really hit the cable market up here locally, because these channels are now owned by out-of-the-area entities, and so it's, it's made it a little bit more concerning. The overall goal, though, is Divka, is some legislation that was passed in 1995 that you'll probably see some more stuff coming forward from staff trying to change that regulation. Right now, the state basically assigns a vendor for areas, and we have little to no control over that vendor once that's done. And so the letter and the intent that's put forward to council is still relative, as this is going to probably continue to go on until some of this legislation is changed. But if there's any questions that council has, I can answer them.
No, that was great. I got a couple of calls about, about this, this issue, actually, which is why I wanted to pull it. And I rate people, you know, not only the fact that we lost a couple of important, you know, local channels, but, you know, we're talking about not, not having the service that we pay a lot of money for. I can't get ahold of anybody. I can't, you spend an hour trying to connect with a human being when you have a cable issue. So this is a local control thing, and it relates to a lot of things we've talked about, broadband, you know. So I think we should, you know, wholeheartedly support this letter, and I also think we should probably, you know, CC a few more people. I know, you know, Senator McGuire and Senator Wood, I know their state representatives, but let everybody know that we're fed up and we're angry, and we want, we want support from the state. You know, and I'm not sure about the FCC chair, what kind of concern he really has. Huffman's supportive, but maybe adding a few more to the CC list would be good, our local reps, just to kind of let them know where we're at. So that would be my motion, actually, would be to add our local representatives and then support the letter.
Do I have a second on that?
I'll second.
All right, all in, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Castellano?
Aye.
Councilmember Moulton?
Aye.
Councilmember Royal?
Aye.
Councilmember Bauer?
Aye.
Councilmember Bergel?
Yes.
Unanimous yes vote. Motion carries.
All right.
Thank you.
So now we will go back to our public hearings. I see Director Malar is here, and we are going to discuss the fiscal year 2021 fee schedule update. Director Malar?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. I do not have a presentation for this item. You know, the fee schedule is updated every year around budget time, but because things change during the year, we typically take it, you know, around this time just to update changes to our services, and also because this document dictates how much we can charge, it's important that we keep it up to date as soon as possible. So if you have any questions, I will attempt to answer for other departments, but I might not know everything, so.
All right, do you have any questions about this item? Councilmember Bergel?
I just have one question about the zoo. So when we're talking about local, is that countywide or just citywide? The.
I'm sure, I'm sure Director Wood would love to answer this question, because we had long conversations about this. Director Wood?
Yes, it is definitely countywide. Koya Park Zoo is a Humboldt County treasure, and so that extends to our entire neighborhood and.
And so that extends to our, our entire neighbor and friends beyond Eureka.
Thank you so much.
Councilmember Royal.
Could you speak to the Development Services Fee for the Appeal of an Administrative Decision? And the, yeah, I'm not, I'm not exactly clear on the proposed changes. Like, is there currently not a fee for that? And so that is a new fee? It, it looks like, yeah, I'm just not clear on it.
That is a topic I cannot speak on, but I believe Principal Planner Kristen Gett is on the meeting. So I will give her the time to speak on that question.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So there is not currently an, an appeal fee in our fee schedule. So that's why we are adding it. We're adding it so that if a public hearing is required for an appeal, it's 75% of the project application fee. Or if there is no public hearing required, then it's 50%.
I'm just seeing a flat rate of $685. Is that, is, am I missing something when it comes to the proportionate amount?
I don't have the fee schedule in front of me, but the intention was that the flat fee that was in there be deleted and this be replaced with the 75 and the 50%.
Yes, Councilmember Royal, I do have it in front of me. The red means that it is going away and the green is the new proposed.
Thank you. I now get that. Okay, great. That seems more, more fair and more relevant to whatever the, the proposed project is, though. That makes sense. Thank you.
Do we have any other questions? All right, seen that. I will open up the public hearing. Assistant City Manager Powell, do we have anybody to speak on this item?
Mayor, no one has signed up. So open and close the public hearing.
Thank you very much. I will close the public hearing, bring it back for comments and a motion to hold the, to adopt the resolution at the City Council of establishing various fees and service charges within the city of Eureka. Councilmember Castellano.
I, I just have a quick comment and it's about the zoo fees, which we completely understand. You know, and I know that we do have, one, I want, I just want to make sure the public still knows that we have zoo passes that can be checked out at the library. And that, that's, and, and those are available for free. One thing I would like to request or hope that maybe kind of check in about how much those are getting used. And if it seems like people who are, you know, are trying to check them out from the library, but they've already been checked out, maybe we can add another one or two to the library available for checkout. That would be my only kind of request, just to continue to make sure there's access for everyone to the zoo.
Yes, Councilmember Castellano, zoo staff does reach out on an annual basis and have conversations with the libraries to get a gauge on what the usage is and whether or not they need more of them. They check, and then a family can come in, check it out, it lasts for a month. As soon as they come and use it at the zoo, the zoo holds on to that pass and then returns it to the library that they got it from. And so they keep up to date on it annually with, with the, with the libraries.
I have just a quick follow-up question, if that's okay. How, do we, how do people find out about that?
So I know that when we first passed this and Director Wood may have some more, when we first passed it, we, we did a lot of reaching out and social media posts and those type of things. I'm sure we're still doing those social media things. Director Wood, do you have more information on that?
Yes, we actually have our Zoo Director Gretchen Ziegler here and she can chime in and give us an update. We also have a new program she wants to share with everyone.
Hi, can everybody see me?
Yes, we can.
Thanks for inviting me, Donna, and everybody else on the council meeting. So we've got a number of, of ways for folks to access the zoo that can't afford the, the full fee. One is the library pass, and that's a fairly new program that we try to refine at least once a year. If not more often, we have a regular check in to see how those passes are going. And as to your question about promoting that, we, we do that. The, the Zoo Foundation does those promotions through social media. We haven't done it on a, on a regular basis, so we can step that up as, as we need to or would like to. And then the, the overall kind of subsidized program is called Everyone Zoo and the library pass is part of that. And the foundation reaches out for donations from the generous community that we have to help subsidize other groups who serve underserved community members of all types to, to bring in people for free as well. So that it's a, it's a robust program. It's largely subsidized thanks to the work of the Zoo Foundation. And again, we, we reach out to the NGOs and agencies in our community to make them aware of that. And that's a more longstanding program that's got a lot of word of mouth and quite a good participation.
Can I ask, are people able to, to get the zoo passes since the library's been closed?
Yes, they, they can. And I don't exactly know how that works, but it is working. I apologize that I don't know exactly how they hand those off, but they're still coming in.
I have it, I, I know that there's some activity going on there too, but I haven't figured out exactly how it's working. So, but I'm glad to know that people still have access to them.
Yep. And it's a greatly appreciated program by the community.
All right. Any other question or any other comments or a motion? Councilmember Brugel.
Just as a point of clarification, I too had that question about the, if they were accessible. I'd like to know more about that, but the fee that is presented, actually the passes that are presented, are those including the Redwood Skywalk? Because I know at one point there was some discussion about that. So if you get a pass from the library, is your Skywalker experience included in that?
Yeah, you bet. I can take that if that's all right. Several years ago, we kind of analyzed the idea of having a separate fee for the Redwood Skywalk or an inclusive fee. And it was determined through a feasibility study that the best route, the most strategic route is to do all-inclusive fee. So it's just one admission charge or one membership fee for the year to get all of those experiences, including the Redwood Skywalk as soon as we're able to open.
All right. And then the last thing I was curious about was, again, with the passes and the library, are there opportunities through schools that families can access them? I'm thinking of schools that, you know, particularly Alice Bernie, some of the elementary schools, Washington. Do we have any programs with them?
We, we do have a partnership with Washington since we're, they're right across the street from the zoo. And that's been ongoing for many, many years now. So they have a particular kind of access to the zoo. That's kind of a shared partnership where we, we've used Washington Elementary students to help focal group our super salmon ideas and things like that. So messaging there. So Alice Bernie, I'm, I know we've reached out in the past. I don't know the current status for particular schools identified.
All right. Any other comments or emotion? We can't go anywhere until somebody makes a motion. Talking about it.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you very much. Yeah.
I move to follow staff recommendation.
Does that work? Is that okay? Do we have a second on that?
Second.
All right. Can we do a vote, please?
Councilmember Castellano.
Aye.
Councilmember Moulton.
Aye.
That's member of Royal.
Aye.
Councilmember Bauer.
Aye.
That's member Brugel.
Yes.
Unanimous yes vote, motion carries.
All right. Thank you very much. We will now move on to ordinances and resolutions where we will keep Director Malar up and have him fill us in on the fiscal year 2021 year, fiscal year budget review.
Hello again. For this item, I do have a presentation, so I will be sharing my screen. Okay, so the fiscal year 2021 mid-year budget review. The purpose of the mid-year is to estimate year-end actuals or estimated actuals. This is as of June 30th, 2021. And then based on those estimates, we are proposing budget adjustments or budget amendments. The focus of the analysis is to compare the 2021 original budget that was passed in July versus our estimated actual, which again is where we think we'll be on June 30th. When I look at the bottom line, when we're discussing the different funds, I will talk about variance. There's two types of variances, a favorable variance, which means that we are likely to see an increase in reserves. And then there's an unfavorable variance, which is a, which ends up being a decrease in reserves. So we are going to go over certain funds, including water, wastewater, the Harbor Fund, the Building Fund, the Internal Service Funds, as well as the General Fund. So we will begin with water or Fund 500. So when we're looking at revenues, the original budget assumed about 8.8 million in revenues in this fund. Our new estimate has increased by over $400,000. Why is that? Well, looking at charges for services, our regular charges or what you see or what comes from water bills, I've increased that by 240,000. This is based on prior year actuals. And then I've also increased our sales to HCSD. We provide them wholesale water. I've increased that by 90,000 based on last year's actuals as well. And then we have seen some increased revenue in, for service installations. This is based on current year activity, so I'm increasing this line item by $70,000. And then we did receive a reimbursement for property damage. So I am essentially acknowledging that activity and putting a budget there for $20,000. When we look at expenditures, we see very little changes in activity. The one area that did see an increase is capital outlay. We are requesting a $100,000 increase to pay for some expenditures that have taken place this fiscal year. And then when we look at the bottom line, you can see that beginning, or beginning in the fiscal year, we anticipated a deficit of 1.2 million. That's actually improved based on these new numbers. And now we are estimating a deficit of just under a million dollars. Why is there a deficit in this fund? Well, it's because we are transferring extra money, a lot of it from reserves to cover capital expenses. But overall, this new outlook is favorable, so that's a good thing. Next, we will move on to the wastewater fund, Fund 510. We have a similar story in wastewater. We are now anticipating more revenue based on last year's activities. And then we also saw some increased revenue around service installations for wastewater that was 125,000. And again, when we look at expenditures in this fund, the one category that is experiencing an increase is capital outlay. And overall, we did improve a bit in this fund. So again, it's a positive variance. The next fund is Harbor or Fund 530. In Harbor, we began the year with a million in revenue and now we've increased that by over $50,000. That comes from Marina Rent for transient boats. That's done very well this year. And then we do have a new lease at the Fisherman Terminal Building and that added about 31,000 to revenue. On the expenditure side, there is an increase in personnel costs. This has to do with temp salaries. And looking at the bottom line, we had a slight deficit at the beginning of the fiscal year, but now we believe we will break even and that is showing a positive or favorable variance. Next, we have the Building Fund, Fund 540. No change in revenue. We're expecting the same amount as we did the beginning of the fiscal year. When we're looking at expenditures, very little change, a slight decrease. And overall, it's not very different, but it did change in a positive direction. And then we have the Internal Service Funds. I've combined these as one unit for the sake of time. But the Internal Service Funds, what goes on in these funds are essentially things that we consider overhead, things that get charged out to the major funds. These items include, you know, expenditures in the city manager department from the city clerk, city attorney, finance, personnel, IT, equipment operations, facility operations, and risk management. When we're looking at the revenues across all these divisions, you can see we are anticipating a slight increase of about 1%. This has to do with a reimbursement for service from the fire GPA, as well as some compensation for property damage that increased revenue by 30,000 based on current year activity. And now we will look at the expenditure side of the Internal Service Funds. This is one area that we've seen a few large increases in personnel. The increase has to do with the state unemployment insurance. That increased by about $8,000. Though I do believe that through the CARES Act that we will be reimbursed up to 50% of this cost. In outside services or money we pay to consultants and people that provide, you know, miscellaneous services, such as our insurance products, this was one category that increased by over $300,000. This was not anticipated back in the spring when we were looking at the budget for 2021. IT costs, including software and hardware maintenance, that has increased by over $165,000. It seems like over time, this is an area that is experiencing more and more increase and that's probably due to the necessity of that division. And then in general administration, we had some miscellaneous items and in total, those items increased the budget by about 53,000. In the category of capital outlay, the Equipment Operations Fund increased 250,000 to cover vehicle purchases that were actually initiated in fiscal year 1921. 250,000 to cover vehicle purchases that were actually initiated in fiscal year 1920, but that didn't happen until fiscal year 2021. When we look at the bottom line, this is one example of an unfavorable variance. You can see the original budget anticipated a deficit of 2 million. This was intentional. The reason we did this is because we do have reserve or reserves in these funds, and by drawing down those reserves, we saved the other funds, including the general fund, money. So we were able to decrease their line items by drawing down money in the internal service funds. Unfortunately, due to other increases, the bottom line is now worse, and we are expecting a budget deficit of about 2.7 million. You know, we, we do have the reserves to cover this, but we will need to make up for drawing down reserves in future years. Last but not least, we have the general fund. Fund 110. This is an area that concerned us back when we were doing the budget. But fortunately, we've seen very large increases mainly due to sales tax, but I will go through some of these categories. Some of the taxes, property taxes did decrease by 225,000, and this reflects less revenue from the RDA or the redevelopment agency residual receipts. Sales taxes increased by 2.9 million due to an improved forecast from HDL companies. TOT increased by 390,000 due to current year activity. Intergovernmental revenues increased. We saw a lot more grant revenue or federal grant revenue mainly due to the CARES Act allocation. And then in other financing sources, also known as transfers, this is money moving between funds. I booked a $330,000 revenue item that is coming from the EPD's Asset Seizure Fund, and this is to cover a debt service payment. On the other side, our expenditures, they also saw an increase, not at the rate of our revenues, which is a good thing. In outside services, I added a budget for the CARES Act project expenditures. We did not know what we were going to spend the money on from the CARES Acts until during the fiscal year. That added a quarter million. We underbudgeted PG&E expenditures for gas and electric service by about 42,000. In the capital outlay category, we increased EPD's capital outlay by about 100,000. And then I added the Eureka Small Business Bridge Program that increased by 300,000. And then in the category of debt service, these weren't new expenditures. This is just budget transfers. So that other financing sources revenue is going to fund the lease payments for the big communications project. And then I also transferred budget out of the Humble Bay Fires budget into this category to properly book these expenditures. And this was the first year of a lease payment for a new fire engine. So overall, you know, we, even though we cut 14% from the general fund last or this fiscal year, we were not able to break even. We still had about a half a million dollars in anticipated or a half a million dollar deficit based on the original budget. But now with these, with a new forecast, we are anticipating a $1.7 million surplus. So obviously, that is a good thing. And other than that, I do have a couple corrections that I found when reviewing the information. So in the personnel departments, I made a data entry error on this account. I entered 90,000 versus 9,000, so I would like to make that correction. And then in the community services budget, the zoo received a grant a couple of years ago and then started spending that grant money this fiscal year. A lot of those expenditures are embedded in their operational line item, so I would like to increase that budget to reflect the grant expenditures. That's increasing that line item from 35,000 to 68,000. And then on the other side of that transaction, I'd like to book some additional federal grant revenue. We are still anticipating more reimbursement from the feds for this activity, so I'm increasing that line item by or from 278,000 to over 290,000. And then one more correction on the position inventory. I would like to rename the planning and building manager to chief building official. So that concludes my presentation. Are there any questions?
And Councilmember Castellano and then Councilmember Arroyo after that.
Thank you, Director Millar. I still have a question relating to the needing to, you know, make up what we've drawn down on the reserves in relation to the budget surplus. Is that something, you know, where we should consider like analyzing, putting some of our surplus towards the reserves that we've depleted or what? Will we get some more depth on that at some point, or what are your thoughts on that?
I, yes, I believe we should make up for drawing down so much last fiscal year. I will provide more information on this topic in the next couple of months and prior to the budget process.
Did you? Did Councilmember Arroyo get?
I'm here.
Oh, okay. Go ahead.
I just, thank you for addressing a few of my questions. You addressed specific line items that I had questions about. But I, yeah, I was wondering about the wastewater projects that were not budgeted for. You may have touched on this, but I, I didn't catch it. And Fund 512, the ones that were not a part of the original budget this year, so sewer improvements and cogent upgrades. Could you speak to those?
I believe some of those changes reflect a delay in the projects that should have occurred in 1920.
You mean 2020, I'm sure.
Or, I mean, I think some of the
Your 1920.
Yeah. I don't know if Public Works Director Gerbing is on the call.
I am. Thank you, Director Millar. Yes, there were a few projects that were delayed somewhat that were budgeted in fiscal year 1920, and then the actual implementation of those carried over into fiscal year 2021, and the increases you see there are reflective of that.
Great. Just a couple more. While we, while I have you, I know now I'm not finding the line item, but it seemed like there was some Caltrans funding that was also not a part of our budget for this year. Director Gerbing, could you speak to that?
Without knowing which line item you're referencing, it's difficult to know, but I can certainly research it and get back to you with more information.
Okay, I did not write it down. I, writing with my left hand is proving to be a challenge. So I'll go back to it and follow up with you. I'm not. It didn't necessarily look like a red flag to me. I just, I just wanted to understand it better. And then the, just in line item 110, which I know there are many amendments here, but what is capital cap lease principal?
So those are your debt service payments. So if you're looking at the slideshow, so those include the first lease payment for the Motorola project. That's that big communications project that EPD is managing. And then also the first lease payment for the new fire engine.
Okay.
And those get, those get broken up between the principal portion and the interest portion.
Okay, okay, great. Thank you.
Any other question? Councilmember Castellano.
I was just curious if Councilmember Arroyo was talking about the sections for Fund 512 for the wastewater capital projects. I know some of those, we deferred some projects planned for this year to future years and then did some projects that we weren't expecting that we had to do this year. Is that? Or is that where some of the question was?
Are you asking me or staff? I just want to be sure.
I think you, Councilmember. But also
And I, I do recall those projects taking longer partly due to COVID, but also there being some unexpected projects. So I, I think it captured, I feel like I got an answer that works. But if you have further questions, be my guest.
I think just related to that, the, those projects that we deferred, Director Gerbing will be able to do next year.
That's correct, Councilmember Castellano. At the next council meeting on the 16th, staff will be presenting the capital improvement program for the next five fiscal years, and we'll be laying out some of those planned expenditures as well as some of the gaps in funding that we see going forward.
All right, any other questions? Seeing none, I'll ask a
Sorry, I did have my hand up, but you didn't see me.
Oh, yeah, for some reason, you're on the next page. Okay, go ahead.
So I, I found the line item is 226, and it was just about these, the revenue from Caltrans, the non freeway funds, was that this dip program funding or something else?
I believe that is to recognize revenue or reimbursement for projects that occurred in 1920. And if I had to guess, that might be, and that might have hit the wrong line item, but I believe that's for the waterfront drive connection.
And without seeing it, what, without seeing the amount, I believe the Director Millar is correct. Waterfront Drive did receive some of the last of the Eureka non freeway funds. So that does make sense that we would have some revenue coming in as reimbursement for those expenditures.
It's $483,492. Does that sound like that would be that?
It, it does sound like it, yes, and we can follow up with some certainty.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, I will ask Assistant City Manager Powell if we have any comments from the public.
No, Mayor, we have not had a request.
All right, so I will bring it back for comments or motion.
I'll move approval.
Thank you very much, and thanks for speaking up. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, any discussion?
Do we need to mention the proposed corrections or that's just taken for granted?
We'll make Yeah.
Okay. I'd be happy to add to my motion with corrections as noted in this meeting.
Okay, you okay with that, Councilmember Brugel, with corrections as noted in the meeting?
Sure.
All righty.
I do have one
Okay, go ahead.
Comment, just because we've made some some staffing changes that I don't know what the public is aware of as far as or how much, you know, people know or care if they're regularly going and interacting with some of our staff that they may have moved or be working in a different department. I just wondered how we've been sharing that with the public and if staff see a need to kind of communicate that.
I can take one, Councilmember Arroyo. Yeah, we wanted to wait until council did approve this budget this mid-year, and at that time, we'll make the announcements to especially, you know, regular developers and others that are in the planning arena and also in the economic development arena about what those changes will be. And we'll be working with HR to fly the position of environmental planner in the planning division, and we'll also make announcements that a senior planner is coming over into economic development to work on economic development and cannabis.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I want to also just thank staff for their team-oriented stick-to-itiveness with the last, I would say, year and a half of pretty substantial shuffling of where people work and how and with whom. And I'm really grateful that our staff are so dedicated to the city. And I just, in, in saying that I support this budget, it's also saying that I support these changes that are kind of an ongoing series of tweaks to how we work. And I don't think it's insignificant because I know it impacts your everyday work life. And so I just want to thank staff for being receptive to those changes. And also, you know, in whatever way you can appropriately funnel feedback about how that's working, I do want to know it, and I, I hope we'll be able to consider that just as we go into our strategic planning as well. But mostly, this is just a word of thanks for your results.
Thank you very much. So any other discussion? All right, we have a motion in a second, so can we have a vote, please?
Councilmember Castellano.
Hi.
Councilmember Moulton.
Hi.
Councilmember Arroyo.
Hi.
Councilmember Bauer.
Hi.
Councilmember Brugel.
Yes.
Unanimous yes vote, motion carries.
Thank you very much. We will now move on to item C2, which is the city camping ordinance. And with that, I would like to invite our city attorney, Black, to make a presentation.
Sorry, I was on mute and I couldn't find myself. So this is on your agenda, I think, for the fourth time. This time, it is for introduction of a, an ordinance that has been substantially redrafted and rearranged. I think when I took a brand-new look at it, I realized that the regulatory portions of it were a bit convoluted. There were some things in the recitations that could have been, could be made more clear, and in particular, clarifying that we want this ordinance, whenever it's subject to interpretation, to be interpreted in a manner consistent with Boise, Martin versus Boise. I also made reference to some of the reasons that the city doesn't want to designate legalized camping areas. And if that, if you have questions about that, I can elaborate. Effectively, though, this ordinance eliminates a prior city ordinance that makes it entirely illegal to camp on public grounds within the city of Eureka, and it attempts to tease out the meaning of the Eighth Amendment relative to homeless individuals having a place to stay, having a place to camp. But on the, on the public side, limiting the areas where people can choose to set up limiting the areas where people can choose to set up a camp, limiting the timeframes that they can set up camp. And making sure that if a person does not have access to a shelter facility or an accommodation, as we define it in the ordinance, then that person does have a right to go on public property in some very, very wide swaths of, swaths of the city and to, and to camp and to sleep overnight. So the, the, the ordinance before you, I think, is a, is a significant improvement over much of the wording in the prior draft. And let me just make clear that this, this charge, this problem is not easy from an attorney trying to draft these regulations. And in many ways, it may not be easy for you as the legislators that are making value judgments on the, on the tension between certain community values. One of those being that people who do not have shelter need to have a place to sleep. And it's, that's their constitutional right. And we don't want to abridge that. On the other hand, the public as a whole also has a right to have access to public facilities, public spaces in significant portions of the community at minimum. So in, in an attempt to kind of thread that needle or to balance those competing values, this ordinance is recommended for adoption. And I think I can say that on behalf of the chief, city manager, Sergeant LaFrance and other people who are on the ground involved in mediating these issues on a day-to-day basis.
All right. Does anybody have any questions for City Attorney Black? Can someone, Bregel?
So I heard you allude to it, but I've been getting a lot of questions about why, why don't we just say they can camp here instead of giving them places where they can't camp? Could you speak to that? Clarify it, please?
Yeah, if the city, the city owns property. And what the city is being asked to do is to delineate property that it owns and say, people can camp here. Once again, the precondition is that they're, the, the people involved are not refusing other shelter space. But let's, let's say that they are in that position. Why don't we designate where people can go and camp? And the reason is, and I think the reasons are, are several. One of them is set forth in the findings of the ordinance. And I think I'm just going to read that and then I will add to it. You would, by the way, you would be making this as a finding. And of course, you're the legislator. So you are in a position to change the wording or to add to this. But there is no specific site or sites that should be designated for camping because it is the experience of the city of Eureka and other municipalities. And I might add throughout the state and country, other municipalities, that sites where camping is continuous or camping populations are numerous become public health, environmental degradation and policing problems. And I would add that they also become liability problems, which I believe was directly experienced by the city at Palco Marsh where someone was badly hurt. And, uh, you know, we ended up being sued by a population of people from that area, which suit is still ongoing. But if we were to designate a particular site as a public entity, what is, what then is our duty to provide sanitation facilities? Clean running water, garbage pickup? You know, I just, I was reading several police reports from campsites in parts of the city in which the police department had to take responsibility for moving thousands of pounds of garbage. Literally 2,000 pounds of garbage in one particular site. And this was from a person that was a recidivist. And, uh, you know, this wasn't the first time that they had caused a, a problem of similar magnitude. So that's why we don't want to designate a particular site. Because we assume, as a public entity, we assume liability that on behalf of the general public, we just can't recommend that we assume.
Yeah, I just wanted to bring that up that I was also curious about, you know, when you're talking about the public health issue. I know in San Diego, they had a huge, was it Hep B? There was a huge outbreak in San Diego where, you know, they had to clean and sanitize all sides of the streets. So I was just curious about, uh, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Castellano?
Um, firstly, thank you, Attorney Black, for putting so much time into this. Let's see, I'll just start with maybe my first question. And that's, I spent some time looking at, uh, I guess codes around chapter 130, which address kind of a variety of offenses against public peace and safety. And, you know, so we, we have kind of regulations, some pretty extensive regulations around sitting or lying on sidewalks in commercial districts between 6:00 AM to 11:00 PM. Obstruction of movement in public ways, storage of personal property, shopping carts. Most of the things that I hear from people are, are, you know, the, the problems are actually already, could be addressed through those existing codes. So I'm kind of curious, you know, if, like, why, and, and maybe this is, I'm sure this is also a political question, but you know, like, like, why kind of venture into a constitutionally protected kind of act with, with, when we may already have codes that address the issues that I receive the most complaints about?
Yeah. So the courts have addressed some of those types of ordinances as well. And I, uh, I was concerned that we really need to address the camping ordinance because the existing camping ordinance was clearly illegal, but is also at the center of a bit of ongoing litigation. But I have some serious questions about the sleep, sit, lie ordinance. That is, I think it's 130.10. It's the one that has the extensive maps of different zones in the city. I, go ahead, please.
Sorry, just, it's 130.12.
Thank you. So I do have a serious question about whether we should have that ordinance on our books. I'm going to be looking at that and conferring with law enforcement to see what's the utility of that. I haven't seen it enforced much, if at all, during my tenure with the city. And so, yeah, there are, there are other ordinances that would seem to address this. I think this addresses it with more sensitivity and relates the need for people to sleep throughout the night to the question of available shelter, which was at the heart of Martin versus Boise. None of these other ordinances do. So as you can see, it's not a rapid process. But over the course of time, we have basically eliminated prohibitions on solicitation, panhandling and replace that with other direct behavioral conditions and also obstruction of public ways and spaces, which I think those regulations have been fashioned in a way that's legal. And, but is also sensitive to human behavior, if you will. So yes, I, I see your point and I'm not sure that all of those ordinances will necessarily be still standing after a further period of time.
Sorry, I hit you unmute, but I didn't unmute. Councilmember Castellano, you have another one?
Sure. And, and I don't mind taking turns. I see Councilmember Bauer has his hand up too. This will be short, though. Um, the, the field screening, screening by, by assistant, by care personnel, you know, versus EPD screening. I know that's something we're talking about implementing that specifically, sorry. People who are kind of with mental health background, screening people who are houseless versus people who are with, with a policing background, screening people who are houseless to assess, you know, sheltering needs. Do we have a kind of a timeline of when we might be implementing that? Or, or if we are?
Uh, City Manager Satteray?
Yeah, that's in the middle of development right now. We're waiting on grant funding from the county in order to hire personnel related to that. It'll be an extension of our diversion program and it'll be an alternative response program that'll deal initially with just mental health issues and having non-armed responses for that. It'll be in conjunction and partnership with CSSET, but led through our uplift staff and having them go out and respond to some of these dispatch calls and have an alternative response that isn't an armed response, but more so a services response for people like that. I would say at a minimum by the, you know, mid to late summer, that that would be up and running. We're, we're right now in the process of getting all the contracts signed with the county for that. And then we'll have to solicit for that staffing to do that. We also have a lot of other pretty competitive grants out there for even more extensive mental health condition staffing. And so we think that that's going to be much more further developed by that time. And we'll add to the restorative justice and not just have it as a diversion program, but also avoid any contact, you know, that could lead to this infraction.
Councilmember Bauer?
Yeah, Mike, I got a couple, two questions for you. Bob, first, have any other municipalities in the state successfully implemented a camping ordinance? And second, and related question is, has any city within Humboldt County in particular, but across the state, have we done any research where a municipality has designated a camp, a camping site? I mean, you answered why we don't do that, but I'm just curious is, has anybody done that within the state?
So as to question number two, my research hasn't gone in that direction. I haven't really looked for that. We know of some pretty somewhat notorious cases where camps usually fairly large scale, because that's how they get notorious, but they become serious problems for the municipality and the municipality has chosen to try to clean those up. And so you have Oakland, you have LA, you have Santa Cruz, you have San Diego. Those were areas where, and there have been legal challenges. But the courts have also upheld some of those cleanup operations. And frankly, I wasn't with the city at the time, but my understanding of the Palco Marsh cleanup is that
Yeah, hi.
the way that it was accomplished, it would likely have been upheld by the courts. Because the Northern District of California is where we sit. And we would have the, the Northern District upheld the city of Oakland in its cleanup effort. So as far as larger encampments, they have not worked out well.
Can you pause for a minute while we deal with this interruption? Pam, can you please mute everybody?
Oh, I'm sorry. It must be me. Sorry. Oh, gosh, I better turn myself off. Yeah, I ended up being online. Oh, great. Yeah.
Have you been able to do that? All right. She muted everyone. That made me too. Okay, go ahead.
Just a little, little bit of Zoom humor there, humor there, but. So as far as other cities in California, revising and being challenged on their camping ordinance. Interestingly enough, I'm not aware of any. I'm aware of cities that have revised their ordinances. And one that did so in great detail was the city of Marysville, but also parts of this ordinance were derived from the city of Nevada. And I think people are struggling with that. But there haven't been the, the court challenges that we can look to in California. But as we're aware, in Oregon, there was a challenge to Grants Pass scheme of regulation. That was not a newly revised scheme of regulation. And so pretty much the court wiped out everything they had in place. There, there, there's been a challenge in state of Washington. So it's a, it's an evolving, it's an evolving field and I think we'll, we'll get clarity. I don't, I don't want this ordinance to be challenged because it's going to be consumptive of resources. But I also have, my personal judgment call is that this ordinance would withstand scrutiny. Because, well, I'll let the city manager add to that.
Well, I, if I was going to add to your designated camping areas, we do have specific examples here locally of designated camping areas. Prior to the evacuation of, of, of Palco Marsh, we had an area that was designated as a lesser enforced area by a previous police chief. It was, to be honest, a disaster. It ended up not only bad for the environment and for the public, but even worse, so worse for the inhabitants, the people that were, community members that were staying there. After the evacuation, we wanted to provide a location for those folks to be at. And we had a rotational camp that went from adjacent to the Warfenger to Del Norte parking lot to Washington and Costa parking lot. And we rotated that campground on a monthly to bimonthly basis. It lasted for about three months and we had the same problems that we had in the lesser enforced areas. It was really bad for the community, but more so worse for those people that were community members that were staying there. I'm sure that Chief Watson could tell you some stories about some of the reports that we've had in, in both of those instances.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I might, I, I have two, two small editorial changes that I'd like to, to make to this ordinance as or before it's being introduced. And that is, if I may, in the definition of prohibited time of day, there's an exception that the person would not have to move on a half an hour after, after sunrise. And it says, when the weather is actively raining or snowing. And I'd like to add the word actively, comma, measurably raining or snowing, or the temperature is below 40 degrees. So simply adding the word measurably so that mist or fog, for example, would not be considered that particular condition. And then in the, the definition of involuntary camping, I don't think this changes the meaning. But I would like to, I think it just makes it an easier sentence to read. So I'd like to add involuntary camping means camping by a, by a person at such time as there is no accommodation. by a, by a person at such time as there is no accommodation excepting homeless persons within the city that is available to that same person. I don't, I think those words are not necessary, but I think they add the clarification of which person we're talking about. So.
You guys all catch that? All right, thank you. Do we have any other questions? If we, okay, Councilmember Castellano?
Sorry, just real quick. When was the last time that, I mean, I, I know and appreciate that there's lots of people within the city who are, you know, working to address homelessness and I'm just curious, when was the last time there was, you know, a, a kind of more publicly arranged planning session around the needs of the unhoused population?
I would ask you that, City Manager Slattery?
I mean, I think that there's been, you know, a lot of work with the Eureka Rescue Mission with St. Vincent de Paul, as well as with Betty, Betty Chin. Council approved $15,000 for Women and Women with Children Shelter. That houses up to 25 people at on Seventh Street. We've also worked with the St. Vincent de Paul to set up the Emergency Overflow Shelter that can shelter up to 25 people. We also worked recently twice over the past two years in purchasing extra beds and, and what do they call them? Beds on top of each other. Come on, help me out here.
Bunk beds?
Bunk beds. For Brian Hall at the Rescue Mission, we increased their capacity to well over 50 people over the past year with, along with their renovations that have happened there. We've worked, as you know, Councilmember Castellano, over the past five months in conversations with Cooperation Humboldt, with AHA, with the Falk's and trying to look at alternative solutions. I think staff has done a lot of work in this area, not only for sheltering purposes, but also for social services and providing people access to resources.
For sure. And I, maybe I missed, didn't frame my question. And I deeply, deeply appreciate that. The, the question is more about when was the last time there is more of like a charrette, which I did bring up in the previous meeting, or, or a roundtable where where there was the capacity for, for council to kind of go into more depth around planning around this issue and to kind of develop, like deepen the cohesive planning process.
I would say probably around the, the time of Palco Marsh. There were a lot of discussions about making sure that those people that were going to be relocated, that they had a place to go. And there was a lot of discussion. G-Cop came as a part of it with Betty Chin and Mercer Fraser, and we established the, but is now the Blue Angel Village. We also set up those transitional camps at those time, at that time. We've definitely learned a lot from those things, but there hasn't been a charrette or anything like that. It kind of came through all of the discussions regarding community members experiencing homelessness at that time. And we had many, many, many meetings over, over a year long period. And so those discussions happened during those councils meetings.
And then Councilmember Bragel, I saw you had your hand up.
Yeah, I just, City Manager Slattery had mentioned that Chief Watson might have some comments and I see him with his camera on, so I'm curious if he wanted to say anything.
That is a dangerous question, Councilmember Bragel. Now, I just touching on some themes. One, I think that Attorney Black very eloquently explained the pros and cons and issues surrounding an ordinance and the need for an ordinance. I had a lot of personal experience through this process the last several years because I was the captain under the former chief that the service area where the Devil's Playground was located existed, as well as the six months worth of rotating temporary overnight designated camping areas. And I would truly echo, they were an unmitigated disaster at so many different levels and caused a lot of harm. And were an imperfect solution and it would be a very bad idea to go down that path again anywhere near like, you know, those would be set up. I do believe that we have had an ordinance on the books for many years now that needs to change, like Attorney Black said, that essentially, you know, as written right now, allows there are completely permits camping blanket wise, city wise. And a lot of thought went into this new ordinance to match the spirit and intent of the Martin versus Boise case. And in fact, even going back to make a few slight changes, we made some more significant changes, really from the compassionate and understanding side of things, including the inclement weather provision, which is something generally we're not doing anyways right now. If it's pouring rain, we're not out there vacating camps. We don't make camps at night unless they're in a doorway of public property anyways, but this makes it the law in the city, so to speak, not just a department policy, which has a lot more strength to it than something that the court spoke to. So I don't know if you have any questions for me other than you're never going to find an ordinance that's perfect, because this is exceedingly challenging, difficult problem. But you, you have to have something. And I think we're moving strongly in the right direction, not just with the ordinance, but with all the other programs. We sent officers and staff, you know, until COVID, all over the place to go to training and they hear what the city of Eureka is doing with our community partners and are amazed how much ahead many of these other areas are that we are, than many of these other areas. And we're blessed to have programs that are forming a foundation. Even when we look at the SMART program, you're going to hear about a little bit later tonight, that the city manager spoke briefly to and in answer to, I believe it was Councilmember Castellano's question about the mental health aspect of things. So.
Thank you, Chief. And Councilmember Castellano?
Sorry, so many questions. Chief Watson, this one's for you. I was just curious, this is something I've wondered about, you know, reading the obstruction ordinance about like, why not expand the obstruction ordinance versus have a camp? I'm just, you know, I just think about like the feedback I get and the challenges that or the, the concerns I get from business owners. It seems like most of them are around issues of obstruction. So I'm just curious your thoughts on that.
Well, one of the things that came immediately to mind is what often takes place is the camping comes first. And then the other behavioral issues proceed with obstructing public ways, littering, trespassing, the disturbance and things like that. And so now you're playing catch up to problems that if the camping ordinance was being followed and if necessary enforced, and when I say enforced, that can take more often not voluntary compliance and other methods. You prevent some of those problems from happening in the first place versus you're playing catch up when you address these negative outcomes or fallouts from the original issue in the first place. Also, I think it's important to layer. You know, you're, you're charging your code enforcement and your police officers with enforcing the law. And as we see, the law is, the courts often can't agree on the interpretation. One court might disagree for another, or you might get the Ninth Circuit, where you have a number of judges that can agree with the other judges. And so again, I think the more authority, so to speak, that you give your city officials to maintain order and public safety from a liability standpoint. And I, I think that's important as well. And so I think it has to be a holistic approach, which is why we added like the obstructing public ways into the ordinance as an example of even when someone is involuntarily camping, if they act a certain way, we have to have the ability to address those kinds of issues as well. I don't know if that answered your question, but that was what my thoughts were.
All right. Any other questions? Okay, seeing none. Before we go to public comment, I've had a request for a break. We took a short one earlier, so we'll do another three minutes. We still have to get through this ordinance and a presentation when we get back. So see you in three.
Next speaker is Tiffany Nokon.
This is Tiffany Nokon. I work as an attorney at Disability Rights California. It's the federally designated protection and advocacy agency in California. That means my office is charged with advocating for the rights of people with disabilities. We are asking the city to rethink the ordinance because it will harm individuals with disabilities experiencing homelessness. In the ordinance, the restricted zones include less essential services, shelters, mobile health providers, legal services, laundry, food, mobile showers and accessible bathrooms. An unsheltered person to leave the restricted zone when not seeking or using essential services would unduly burden them. This would effectively deny them access to essential services and programs. And this is especially true for people with disabilities. The recent edits to the ordinance failed to address these concerns. The ordinance still violates the Eighth Amendment. The ordinance still promotes citations with increasing fines against people who have no money. And the ordinance still criminalizes homelessness. The city should not be criminalizing and frightening people with disabilities who are trying to survive. Do not pass this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Nessie Wade.
Hi there.
Hey Nessie.
Can you see me or am I, can you hear me?
I can hear you. We can see you.
Okay, well, thank you Tiffany for your comments. I am very concerned about what this will do to folks also who are homeless and experiencing disabilities, which you know involves a very wide range of conditions. I'm also very concerned about the people themselves having an opportunity to, to give voice. I think Leslie touched on this a little bit in terms of having a larger community kind of commentary. I love the commentary earlier. I really applaud the city for reaching out to do something that involves diversity, equity, inclusion. It's an amazing thing. But the one comment that was made by, I think her name was Brandy, I don't remember, but anyway, that people need to feel that they're invited, they're asked to dance and that their music is playing. And I don't think this happens with these folks who are being impacted by this ordinance at all. There has to be a clear engagement and get clear messaging. All that was said, and I really am concerned that we aren't being really very concrete and clear about this. I think that, you know, that I just wonder what the goal of the ordinance is. And I'm particularly concerned also that it's going to differentially impact people that are already very poor. You know, making it an infraction, I think, was intended to be a good idea, but it also takes it out of the realm of having any recourse with the courts. It amounts to fines piling up, which people can't pay. And then what? What's going to happen after that point? I have a lot of issues around the notion of involuntary camping. That's just my thing, because I think a lot of people out there are not camping. They're simply sleeping and living and doing what they can. And the ordinance itself says that living outside temporarily is camping. And that makes, that's criminal right then and there, regardless of what your intentions are. I also have some questions about what happens to someone who doesn't comply. What then? It says it doesn't violate, violate any human rights or, or that sort of thing, state, federal, local rights, whatever. I'm very concerned about people being asked to go somewhere or being made to go somewhere because there are no other alternatives. And I guess I wonder what kind of options there are outside of the city sculpted programs for people. And I'm wondering about, you know, concerns about religious orientation and other things that get in people's way of being able to engage. So I, I would like to see city sanctioned areas. The question about what alternatives are there? Have other cities done this? Community supported shelters in Oregon?
Sorry, Nessie, thank you. You have three minutes, is that?
Oh dang, too much to say about too much.
We'll see you down. Next item or the next person, please.
Is Jasmine Guerra. Hello, Council. My name's Jasmine. I am a community member and I also work with the Humboldt Area Center for Harm Reduction, where the majority of my clients are people experiencing homelessness and other life stressors. I'm calling in tonight to urge the council to not pass this ordinance. In past meetings where this ordinance was discussed, we heard EPD and other city officials talk about how the ordinance wouldn't theoretically be punitive. Yeah, it would mean giving EPD the power to find people and potentially potentially give people jail time. Regardless of whether EPD will follow through with their promises to refer people to services with whenever a complaint is made, which I'm not saying that they are not going to do. But I just think that having the ordinance isn't necessary if that is the promise. One aspect of the ordinance that I find particularly frustrating and dehumanizing is that the council and other city staff have clearly stated that EPD will not inform people where they are allowed to camp. And that's something that we all heard discussion on earlier in the meeting. I hear the city's concerns about having concentrated areas in the city that the city would then be liable for. But my point is that if we don't want to condense people in specific areas, then we shouldn't be forcing them out in the first place. People need to be close to resources that are available to them, which happen to be in the areas that the ordinance describes as impermissible for sleeping. Or as the ordinance words at camping. I think Eureka has the potential to be innovative and develop ways to integrate our unhoused community members in a way that makes them feel cared about and not like we are ashamed of them, afraid of them, or even disgusted by their need to sleep. And yes, this does mean sometimes during the day. The more you get to know people who are experiencing homelessness, the more you understand that sometimes sleeping during the day is actually a survival tactic. Yeah, thank you for hearing my comments and I hope that you will reconsider or consider not passing this ordinance tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Rebecca Smith.
Rebecca? Do you see you're on the call or on the call anywhere?
I do not. So our next speaker, moving on.
I see here on the next page, I just, I just have an audio problems.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Why don't we come back to her and she'll try and plug in and plug out?
That sounds like a good plan. So we'll, we'll get you back for sure, Rebecca.
Okay, our next speaker is Janelle Egger.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, sorry, I can't get the video going. This is actually quite distressing for me. Let me start with the statement of purpose. It states that camping activities may constitute a public health and safety hazard when conducted without the proper security and sanitary facilities and precautions. This bill provides no security, no health or sanitary facilities. That is what's needed. Those are needed in a place where people can live, where there is, there are rules, basic tenancy rules, where they have rights, tenancy rights, where they have responsibilities, tenancy responsibilities. It'll need to be under a, the shelter crisis declaration to alleviate some of those liability issues. But this ordinance doesn't address any of those or any of the needs. It doesn't address any of the problems that are being said, what happened at the sleeping sites? And I can tell you that the sleeping sites had problems, but they were vastly better than what you're proposing here because there were toilets and there was garbage service. And that's like light years ahead of what you're doing here. It also was a place where they could go and sleep, where they could leave their stuff during the day. I don't think you should go back to sleeping sites, maybe some sleeping sites are good. I think a camp, a place where people can live, actually live and get on with their lives. I think a camp, a place where people can live, actually live and get on with their lives. I don't know how much time I've used. I think I've used it all. Anyway, I think I've said enough. Thank you.
Thank you, Janelle. And then do we have Rebecca back?
I lost her on the other screen. I do not see her now.
She's in waiting room. Here she comes.
Okay.
Rebecca, can you hear us?
Welcome back Rebecca. Are you ready?
Yes, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Sorry about that. I'm not sure why that didn't work. Thank you. My name's Rebecca Smith. I'm an attorney with Legal Services of Northern California. We comment on behalf of Vernon Price and Carolyn Navarre, who risks substantial harm if this unconstitutional ordinance is enforced against them. I want to start by making clear that we're not here to say, and we've never said, that Eureka must designate a site for camping. What we are here to say is that banning people from most of the city without telling them where they are allowed to be is illegal. It's important to point out that there are many options available to the city between designating locations for camping and concealing where in the city is actually available for unsheltered members of our community to sleep. I can't find any. From our standpoint, this ordinance is problematic for four reasons. It punishes people with no choice. It doesn't tell people how to comply, and it discriminates against people with disabilities. And also it violates the state created danger doctrine. First, other municipalities that have passed similar laws have lost when challenged in court, including in Grants Pass, Oregon, Boise, Idaho, and the city of Aberdeen, Washington. The added language in the statement of purpose and changes to penalties for its violation do not resolve this conflict. The ordinance operates in the same way as the illegal ordinances, by punishing those with no choice but to sleep outside, exactly what the Eighth Amendment of the Constitution prohibits. Until Eureka has sufficient shelter space, it cannot punish those who have no choice but to sleep outside. Attempts at circumventing this precedent, this precedent have not worked out in other jurisdictions. In fact, after costly court battles, they've lost. Second, the city refuses to identify any location where camping would be allowed, making it appear that the intent of the ordinance is to force homeless individuals to leave the city in order to comply. Again, exactly what the courts have found impermissible. Finally, it discriminates against people with disabilities and exacerbates a public health problem. As the court in Blake versus Grants Pass wrote, "There is no doubt that homelessness is a serious public health concern. Homeless individuals have higher rates of chronic physical and mental health conditions. Uprooting homeless individuals without providing, providing them with basic sanitation and waste disposal needs does nothing more than shift a public health crisis from one location to the other, potentially endangering the health of the public in both locations." The ordinance creates danger for our community. Just last week, a court in Santa Cruz applied this principle, finding that forcing people experiencing homelessness to move in the midst of a pandemic is a state-created danger. What's true in Santa Cruz is true in Eureka. This ordinance puts people in harm's way. For all of these reasons, we urge the city to reconsider not only the legality of this proposed ordinance, but its potential effect in human terms upon our most vulnerable residents, who are already facing a multitude of life-threatening public health crises as a result of their poverty and of the COVID-19 pandemic. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, our last speaker is Sandra Warshaw.
Thank you very much Sandra. Are you there Sandra? I see, I see you.
I'm asking her to unmute, so.
Okay, okay. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
You can, okay. You know, I want to stress something that comes up a lot. I do enthusiastically appreciate the programs that are happening. I do, you know, from uplift to, you know, CSAT, all of them. But what concerns me is, you know, I, when you look, I studied the transcript of the two meetings on camping, and it appears to me over and over, the statement as to why it's happening now refers back to that there's, there's pressures from the business people. And there's an interest in balancing the concerns of the different groups. I understand that. I think that would be hard to deal with COVID and these other issues. But what I really want to stress is that how can we solve problems if we really don't talk to the people experiencing them? And, you know, it's something that Leslie brought up, and it's something that was more true at the beginning of this homeless epidemic back in the 90s. I think we absolutely have to pause a moment and make sure we go out and talk to them. I did a short survey, one, you know, a short walk this morning, and what they told me were things that, if I were to tell you, you might not believe me, but I really think that we absolutely have to hear them. I met a young man who really wanted a job, you know, but he was having trouble with it. But his interactions with the police, we're not really dealing with that. Now, I'm not saying that it's always the case, but I also think that it's too much pressure on the police who have, have the responsibility of enforcing laws, that then they're supposed to do it in a gentle, kind way, when that often is not what works with laws. So, you know, the point I'm trying to make is, if we, what is our goal? Our goal is to bring people off the street. That's a shared goal. Our goal is to be loving. That's a shared goal. But we're not going to get there if we do it in a way that leaves out the voices, the experiences of the people out there. And I know it's true, and you know, when I've walked and done a tour, people voluntarily told me how much they love and appreciate Kim, you know. So it's not about the individuals, it's about our strategy and our approaches. And one of the things that I'm always calling back to is Martin Luther King Jr., it revolves to what we've been talking about, was talking about, we have wonderful principles, but often our actions are antithetical. And also the, the point of that earlier presentation, which was beautiful about inclusion. You know, I have, like I said, I have read it upside down and backwards, and I do not see that the voice, the concern, the heart of the people. And they basically, is my understanding, is they're really afraid to speak up. Because if they do speak up, they really don't know what will happen to them. And so I think we need to change something so that, that, you know, when they tell me, they, they, they have ideas on how to make encampments safe, because they want to be safe, they want to have rules, they don't want to have it so that the rules, people are hurting them. So I don't think we should go by the models. I mean, you're going to find the models that don't work. You know us, we're going to find the ones that do. So Seattle, in response to Boise, created, they, they increased their encampments, and they increased tiny home villages, and they encouraged people, you know, to streamline the process and, you know, with a loving response. And the earlier versions of, there was, there was a faith-based approach to it. You know, we had people from the Temple Beth El, we had, you know, we had people from the.
Thank you Sandra.
That's it.
That's it.
Well, thank you, everybody. You know, appreciate it.
All right. Did you say that was our last caller?
That was the last speaker who had registered, yes.
All right. If that is the case, then I'll bring it back to council for a discussion or, and/or a motion. Councilmember Castellano.
First, I just have a quick question for Attorney Black, and that is, Nessie mentioned that there is, it's an infraction, there's no recourse in courts. Could you speak to that? That's something I'm not familiar with.
You're muted Attorney Black.
Thought I had undone that. That's not correct. When a person is given a citation for an infraction, they are signing a promise to appear, or even without signing, it can be issued to them, but it's placed in their possession. And that appearance is before a judge. It's very similar to traffic court, so nobody gets a traffic ticket and is denied a promise, opportunity to appear.
Councilmember Moulton.
Also a question for City Attorney Black. Then where would jail time come into the equation, if at all, in this process? How, what would have to happen before somebody actually went to jail?
That's a somewhat complicated question, because I think there is a technicality based on non-payment of fines that could result technically in jail time. Such people who are unable to pay fines would never be jailed. I'm just going to say that flat out. Why? Because they would have to be charged with higher level crimes and basically the, the courts are not going to put people in jail for inability to pay. So, you know, in theory, there could, theoretically, there could be people that violate this ordinance that have the ability to pay. And, and maybe don't need either, either homeless shelter or public camping at all. I know that that's not a likely scenario, but it's certainly a possible scenario and that those people are regulated as voluntary campers, just as much as anybody else would be. I can see you're not, you're still a little confused.
Well, so I'm picturing someone is repeatedly refusing help, repeatedly staying in the same place and being asked to move. They get an infraction, they get another infraction, they get three in a year and the fines stack up, and they don't pay or they don't show up in court. And that, would that not result in like, say if I got a traffic ticket and I just didn't show up and there was a big fine on the books, there would be a bench warrant, right?
Yes.
And is that not the case here? Or is that what I'm understanding?
I think theoretically it could be the case. But the charging decision for that would be made in the office of the city attorney. And there are lots of potential misdemeanors that we don't even pursue today because the courts are not receptive, the, the jail is not receptive, and the city attorney's office is not receptive because it's very resource consumptive to pursue somebody for a misdemeanor. So I'm not gonna, I'm not going to say that it, this could never evolve to misdemeanor status, but I can say that it's in the practical world, in the real world, it's not going to.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Royal.
Just have a few comments to make in response to what I've heard. And to the question that came up earlier around other cities that have similar ordinances, it looks like there've been quite a few in the last six months that have been adopted, Oakland, those, etc. So in California, that, that seek to limit specific areas or, you know, essentially in Oakland, they called it high sensitivity areas, and they're only allowing, you know, camping on one side of the street and a very specific footprint. You know, so each city seems to have attempted to kind of create, and they're, you know, creating a distance from schools and certain types of facilities that are in our ordinance. So, you know, I think there's a spate of attempts to satisfy the requirements of the Boise decision while also allowing for some restrictions to where, where camping can occur. So I don't find our ordinance to be too different from some of the others that have been passed. Now, whether those ordinances will have legal challenges, I honestly, I think we're all going to have to see how this goes, but at least we are not alone in this. And there are certainly other types of, you know, sideboards trying to be drawn by other, other cities like us kind of facing the same challenges. I just want to note that in my time on the council, no effort that I have seen thus far to try to allow for camping in designated areas or turn a blind eye to areas where there was substantial camping has been effective. Now, the reasons for that are abundant. I don't know if we need to rehash them all here, but it has been an enormous burden on the city and on our staff and a cause of just so much, so much anger, frustration, exhaustion, disappointment, you know, a use of resources in ways that we never could have anticipated when it comes to cleanups and an ongoing requirement to clean up, just something that is beyond the capacity of our personnel to deal with. So when I think about what the city has to do, we have to manage our public property that we are the owners of and the managers of, and we have our personnel to be good employers to and to, you know, protect in many ways, as well as members of the public, including folks who are houseless. So I see it as, you know, a very, like, even responsibility to everyone. And I think the way this is framed, from my view, allows for, you know, really speaks to in that intro statement and our council findings, as, as stated in this, you know, that we are responsible to all users of public property. And I can really get behind that. So while I am, I have looked every single time this has come up to like, whatever the most compassionate option is. I think in the situation we are in now, this is a compassionate option that still satisfies.
Natalie, your sound went out? Maybe your internet's frozen? Has everybody's internet frozen?
We still got you.
Everybody looked really still for a while.
She stopped mid-sentence to look at her phone.
Okay, so does anybody else have anything?
I think she's checking her download speed right now, just to see.
I'm sure she is. We could get back to her when she gets back. And if she disappears for a while, we know she's probably going out and coming back in. Does anybody else have anything to say right now? Comments, questions? Councilmember Bauer.
Yeah, you know, this is a super challenging issue. And I think we've all received emails from people seeing, you know, with different viewpoints, right? And it, it's hard. I mean, I don't, I think this is important to, to, to note that the intent of the ordinance is not to criminalize homelessness. That's not the intent. I'll say from firsthand experience, I've been out to Devil's Playground way back, I only remember that was 10 years ago, to assess the environmental damages. I've been to the camp behind Taco Bell, seeing incredible sights. People living in the middle of wetlands, you know, hundreds of bikes laying around, many of them quite expensive. Just most amazing sights and an amazing amount of environmental degradation. I've heard from people that tell me they're afraid, you know, to, to use the Bay Trail. And yet, you know, this is a problem that's bigger than Eureka, right? We all know that. This is, this is a, this is a part of the industrialization of the United States, you know, job loss and so many other things. So I think what we're trying to do here is, you know, put together something that, like, Councilmember O'Royall was saying, you know, that balances, you know, concern of all of our community with, with the issues that we face. And I think it's a, it's a good path forward to see if we can, you know, create some balance for, for all parts of our community. And that's all I have to say right now.
Can I just ask, is Councilmember Royal back? I'm going to check on the other page.
I did see her.
She is, okay. And I will ask you then, Councilmember Royal, do you want to finish your thought?
Yeah, thanks. I went on and on before I realized that I was no longer in the meeting. So I'm very sorry. Yes, I, I don't exactly remember where I left off, but that's okay.
I felt that, I just wanted to point out that, you know, when it comes to folks who have reached out to me about this, certainly there have been business owners and you know, I know doctors' offices in the, in the Old Town and Downtown area have reached out to me, you know. But also a number of people who work in those businesses, many of whom a few folks I know who, who I, I think are on the verge of being housing insecure themselves and live very hand to mouth and feel that they just can't take the strain of not having people frequent the businesses they work at, people in this food service industry who are struggling to make it right now. So I think about not just our employees and members of the public who've expressed concern about having some limitations and sideboards around this and not just business owners, but also the workers of of those businesses who rely on, on, you know, the attraction of Old Town for, for visitors and locals alike as their sort of bread and butter. So I just want to acknowledge that there's more than just like the fortunate few who are, who are being considered when I think about this. And I, what I do appreciate about this ordinance is that the, the definition of available acknowledges that that means something that suits the needs of that individual. And so I think that means that, means everything that relates to their, like their physical body, their mental self, their like religious needs and requirements. All of those things are a part of the, the framing of available in our definitions, which is sort of an interesting place to put it. But I think once you read it, it makes sense that available means that it, it meets those, that person's needs and is available to them. And if that's not the case, then, then they are able to, to camp. So I am certainly open to considering a modified fee structure that's even lower. I don't know, maybe that's something we want to talk about. I'm, I'm open to different forms of outreach that we might be able to accomplish that would address some of the concerns we've heard about this evening and have heard about over the time we've been considering this. I still think something like this is necessary and I would hope that it would actually result in several of our other ordinances being reconsidered and potentially be taken off the books, which looks like is what has happened in a lot of other cities where they've done this recently. They have then gone and looked at past ordinances that were around sleeping and lying and other sort of uses of public space that people wanted to, wanted to regulate and, and result in those being changed or thrown out. So repealed, I guess. So I certainly am hopeful that this will kind of catch us up to date and be a middle ground while we also look at the legality and usefulness of some of those other ordinances because they don't want to have just like duplicative things on the books that aren't, aren't doing us any good and, and may not be legal or for their intended use. So anyway, I support what staff have done with this. I know it doesn't make everyone happy with the outcome, but I do think based on the community concerns I've heard outside of these, this meeting as well, that it addresses some, some real need.
All right, any more discussion or emotion? Councilmember Castellano.
Let's see. I want to address a few things. One is I really want to reiterate, I still don't know if, you know, I, I don't feel that I've heard an interest from this, but I'm interested in it and it actually feels really critical to me that we, we actually make a plan that's like holistically looking at the landscape of homelessness, not just one ordinance or, or measure at a time. I mean, and I, I appreciate that Attorney Black is, is, you know, interested in looking at 130.12, but you know, to me, it, it makes so much more sense to actually look at all of these things in relationship to one another rather than to kind of pick and choose how we're, how we're doing this. It, it doesn't feel like it kind of respects the complexity of the landscape. And, and honestly, I mean, I don't, I mean, sure, like, maybe there will be, you know, a couple of council members mentioned litter. You know, may, maybe it will address litter in one spot or a few spots, but it won't resolve the issue that people are outside who don't have a place to put their trash. You know, I mean, that, that's not actually resolved by this whatsoever. There's, you know, there's still many people outside, maybe even more hidden because of the way this is. And so maybe the trash will be more embedded in, you know, natural areas. And so that's where I get frustrated, you know, because I feel like we're kind of like chasing ourselves without being like methodical and practical about it. I also, you know, as someone who, one of my three jobs works with people who experience disabilities and advocates for people regularly, I do share other public commenters' concerns about access and disabilities. And, you know, those things haven't, you know, been resolved through, through this. You know, I mean, again, it seems like that we can't talk about where people can camp. It's, you know, kind of more and more hidden, which sure, I mean, I can see where that satisfies some people who just don't want to see people who are homeless, you know, and, but it doesn't actually satisfy the, the challenge that we're facing, you know, and I don't think it's easy. I mean, again, we haven't mentioned it tonight, but we're still in the midst of a pandemic. You know, which has repercussions that are constantly unfolding and you know, and we're kind of in the future unveiling some programs that I'm really excited about, but they're not here yet. You know, I, I just think that, yeah, I've said it enough. I, I think that we should not, I think we should repeal and not replace until we actually have a charrette and conversations that involve people from a wide variety of vantage points to, to actually address the issue, you know, and especially since the last time we talked about it was around the time of Palco Marsh, you know, I mean, a lot has changed since then. And, you know, it, it would be really great to look at that again and, and look at where we are now.
Councilmember Bregel.
Actually, I just have so many thoughts right now. I'm not even, I'm not even sure where to begin. So I guess I want to start with community. That'll be where I'll start. And in a community or a society, there are rules and there are ways that we have to interact with people that are fair and safe. And, you know, I've heard here tonight several times about, you know, the most vulnerable population. I work with the most vulnerable population. I work with children, you know, that's to me is more vulnerable. But that's just a sidebar. That doesn't even, you know, I didn't even need to say that. What I do want to say is that we have been down this road. I support the ordinance. We've been down this road. You know, many of us on this call, as I look on here, well, several of us spent a lot of time in Palco Marsh, a year actually, trying to work with folks and support them into a different way of life if they wanted to do that. And what that resulted in was one lawsuit with a particular woman who rolled her ankle and got a lot of money. She did say she was gonna open a camp, but that didn't happen. And then, of course, there's the lawsuit that came forward with the group of people that were living there. So there is, there is a history of liability in this that I think we need to, to consider. All of that being said, it's, it's, I just feel like I too have talked to so many business owners in Old Town. You know, I got a call where one girl was getting harassed, you know, regularly. And I was actually gonna go down there at six to kind of talk to the person that was harassing her. It was a person that was on the street. But the point being is there are people right now, this is a pandemic. And there are people right now in business that are hanging on by a thread, barely by a thread. And these are people that have been experiencing cleaning up people's poop, cleaning up people's trash, theft, broken windows, all of these things over a long period of time. And I'm not saying that it's, it's only community members, you know, experiencing homelessness, but certainly it's had a huge impact on our local businesses. So the one thing that I did hear that I'm very interested in is is creating, one thing we did have at the marsh, which I really appreciated and respected and was very helpful is we would have service fairs or Chief Mills would have a community meeting down there and we would have discussions about what was happening and what, you know, what was going to be next on the agenda as far as moving forward. And I think that, you know, if that might be something we could do at Free Meal, where we could have, you know, round table at Free Meal once a week where people could say, you know, this is what's happening, this is what I need, this is what I want to talk about. But we, we are responsible to the whole community. And that's, or at least that's my perception of what our job is. And unfortunately, you cannot, and I've said this 100 times, you cannot manufacture willingness. And if we provide uplift and we reply, provide all the services under the sun and someone isn't willing, it doesn't matter. It doesn't matter. So I would like to make a motion that we, hold on, that we waive full reading, read by title only and introduce bill number 993-C dot S and ordinance of the City of Eureka repealing and replacing section 93.02 of title 9, chapter 93, parks and recreation.
Okay, Councilmember Bauer, any discussion? Councilmember Castellano and then Royal.
Just to, you know, just want to bring up a couple of things. I mean, I, I don't know, I guess I don't think we really need to decide like who the most vulnerable population is, you know. I just think that that's very person specific. And, I mean, I, you know, I don't think, I just want to make a couple of points that I feel very responsible to the whole community, you know. I mean, and deeply responsible to the whole community and I don't, I mean, you know, I, I understand the framework that's being given, but I don't actually find that a no vote on this is any less responsible to the community. I think that there are many, many ways to address an issue and I don't think we're there yet. And I am like deeply committed to supporting people, supporting businesses, like making our community thrive. And I don't, I don't think that this ordinance is, you know, and, and some of it is processed and, you know, I just want to keep talking about like actually developing a plan. And I really wish that other council members were interested in that. I'll bring it up as strategic visioning. You know, and yeah, that's, that's all for now.
Thank you. Councilmember Royal.
Thanks. Yeah, I actually raised my hand to say I am interested in that, our strategic visioning to kind of bring that forward and talk about it a little bit more. It has been several years. You know, the last, certainly not the last community meeting where we discussed this, but one of the last really broad meetings was many years ago where we held a joint meeting between the the city and county to talk about housing first as an approach. And I think a big part of that conversation was committing ourselves to a very concerted effort to make way for more affordable housing that is permanent housing. And a, you know, I think there's been a lot of debate about what housing first entails and what approaches really are housing first and what are not. We were strongly discouraged at that time from focusing a lot of city energy on temporary shelter. And so and the county and city both committed to that several years ago. And then subsequently did general plan and zoning code and major policy updates and projects that, that support that. So while I know we're not here to talk about the housing first strategy or what other great things we've done, which I think we always do end up kind of talking about, like, we're doing all these other things that are really important. And there are still unsheltered folks who can't find shelter that meets their needs and are, and are camping essentially. So I think I do want to talk about that more. I think it's time to address that again. I like that this ordinance does talk about private property as an option if people meet certain criteria and manage the property so that it's, doesn't become a nuisance, but so that it can, you know, and I, I would love to see like when I look at other communities and the programs they're doing well that are transitional programs. I mean, there certainly are some that are in municipal and public property and there are quite a lot that are private faith-based efforts or other groups that have, have worked to develop those solutions as well. And so I think I am at my wits' end for what we can really do with city resources and with the infrastructure we have in place and the staff we have in place without like, without making more of a problem than we're solving. And yet I do want to continue the conversation and I recognize that there are certain parts of the community that are just, that really need some boundaries drawn. And so all of those things together mean that I support this moving forward, but I also think we need to address a more comprehensive approach. Like, I think it can be both, and I don't think that by voting yes or no, it means that we don't love our community. And I think it's important to acknowledge that. So anyway, I'm ready to vote. I just wanted to say those things.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second. Councilmember Bregel. You're muted.
I too am interested in looking at it at strategic visioning. I think it's an important, important topic. And this is not, this is not an easy decision to make. And I just wanted to put out there, it was never my intention to put out that yes or no meant that you didn't care or did care or any of that business. You know, it's just, this has been such a process for such a long time. I look forward to continuing to move forward with solutions, but good Lord, it's exhausting sometimes, so.
Councilmember Moulton.
I don't want to pile on just to say that I agree. Everybody's making some really good points. I just want to say that I have worked with the houseless and homeless population. I have slept in the Devil's Playground. I have lived in my car. And I totally see that there is, it is a multifaceted problem, that there's a million reasons someone could end up on the streets and that some folks are in that situation because they are bad actors and the cops have to have a tool. So at some point, they have to have something in their toolbox to help as Councilmember O'Royo puts it, impose some boundaries. So I would support this for that reason because I trust that there are all of these others tools at play too, and that there are all these other options and that we do have a multifaceted approach and that we can address this in strategic planning, but that the police need something to help when folks are need boundaries, when they need to be, something needs to be enforced.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Are we ready to vote? It looks like we can vote.
Councilmember Castellano.
No.
Councilmember Moulton.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Royo.
Aye.
Councilmember Bauer.
Aye.
Councilmember Bregel.
Yes.
Four yes votes. Councilmember Castellano dissenting. Motion carries.
So I want So I wanted to say we have, our next item is the Eureka Tourism Marketing Report. It's gonna take a few minutes. At nine thirty, we're supposed to extend the meeting. I think it'd probably be smart if we extended it now. And so that we don't have to interrupt them. So moves, thank you, thank you, Councilmember Arroyo.
Can we extend to ten, just to be on the safe side?
Yes.
Okay, I guess I.
If somebody seconds it, we can. If somebody seconds it, we can do that. Thank you, Councilmember Braggel. Can we have a vote, please?
Castellano.
Aye.
Molton.
Yes.
Arroyo.
Aye.
Bauer.
Aye.
Braggel.
Yes.
Unanimous yes vote, motion carries.
All right, so now we can invite, I believe Jennifer Eddy is here to give us our report on the marketing and tourism plan. So thank you for holding in there with this, and Emily Kirkish as well, and Bob.
Well, thank you guys so much for allowing us to speak tonight. We're sensitive to all the good work that's been done and the amount of time it's taken. So I will speak fast, but I will also commit to answering questions for as long as that makes sense. So feel free to, to let me have it at the end if there's any, and I'm looking forward to getting started. So I'll share screen if that's okay with everyone. Okay, can everyone see my slides? Okay, wonderful. Well, the last time I was in front of most of you, there's two new council members that I haven't had a chance to meet yet. So thank you for the opportunity to present to you today. But the last time I spoke to council, it was last summer, shortly after the brand launch, and we had shared with you all kind of our plans for the year. And of course, at that point, everyone was hoping that COVID would be less of a long-term situation than it has proven to be. So we wanted to provide an update to you all on what we've been working on, where our focus has shifted and where it's remained consistent as we tried to pivot to adjust to evolving realities. So I've tried to kind of break today's presentation up in a couple of different chunks so that we can all kind of level set on where we are against where we originally set out to be. So the original contract with Eddie Alexander was designed really to meet three primary objectives. So the first was city-centric branding, which we began to accomplish with the launch of the new brand last spring, but will continue to implement as that gets rolled out into the community in a number of different ways. And that process has begun, but will only pick up momentum as people can be out and about more in the months ahead. Then tourism marketing, the the goal of attracting people to the city, to help the economy, to help increase some of the assets and offerings that are here, and then to improve the tax base to provide resources for citizens who live here. And then third, and probably most important, is improving the quality of life for citizens who call Eureka home. So we've been thinking about each of these things through a couple of different lenses and developing plans and evolving those plans sort of in real time as the COVID situation has affected tourism pretty dramatically. And really, quality of life for people who live in the city, it's affected dramatically as well, right? Folks can't come out and celebrate in the ways that they normally would, or enjoy their city in the way that they normally would. So we're very attentive to that. Well, obviously, COVID has dramatically affected the tourism industry, just like many other industries. But it has been hit hard and with many, many punches along the way. So every time there's a new news cycle, that's having a profound impact on not only whether or not people travel, but when they feel, when they report they will feel comfortable traveling. And so it's having this kind of elongating effect on the industry expectations. So these are just some of the headlines from the last year. So as we thought about kind of our role in all of this, there's been a series of things that we think we can continue doing, just as we've been setting out to do, maybe the timeline gets stretched out, but we're still working towards the same goals. And then there's some new things that we've added to the mix, because it feels like the right thing to be focused on, given the big picture goals that have been set forth. So the the first big thing that we made an adjustment on is we put more of a focus on community and citizen communications. So we started the weekly mayor videos along with Mayor Seaman earlier this year, and we've had several other council members step in on different occasions to to share in the process. But there's been forty-two of those videos created to date. They go out every Friday on Facebook and then through the city's accounts. And then they are also shared through Key and the local television network as well. So reaching a varied audience and reaching new people in different ways has been kind of important in this moment. We've also been providing a variety of updates to various city groups through a number of different newsletters and channels that the city already had established, some new ones that we've developed. And again, we're really focused on just reaching as many people as possible and inviting them into the process where there are activities going on and keeping them up to date on activities that are maybe happening more behind the scenes. We're also monitoring ongoing traveler sentiment, and traveler sentiment kind of comes in two ways. There's sort of inbound and outbound, right? Whether people are comfortable making travel decisions, going out and visiting a new place during a pandemic, and also whether the community is comfortable inviting people in in a pandemic. And so there's a variety of different factors at play here, and we've been providing bimonthly, every two week updates to the city leadership team on the staff side about sort of what is happening on the national level, what we're seeing happening on the local level, and how do those different indicators direct the the efforts that we're putting forth to try and make the best use of the city's investment and and efforts related to our contract. Then there's media management. While that was part of our original contract, the the goal and the efforts of media management, the specifics of it have really evolved, right? Normally, we would be out trying to get as much coverage as we can. Now we're reaching out to media and building relationships and saying, please don't do any travel writing in this moment. The the right thing to do is to wait, and we'll let you know when it's safe to do so, and then we really want to work with you. And here's some stories we might work on together then. So it's a little bit unusual in in our world to be doing that, but we think that's important. We're trying to make sure that those that are outside the area are aware of the health regulations that are protecting our citizens in this moment. So that's ongoing. Placemaking strategy is also ongoing. Part of rolling out the brand is making sure that the brand comes alive and becomes an organic, local part of the experience when you visit or when you live in the city. And then the Redwood Skywalk is opening soon. Again, a little bit COVID-dependent, but we've been working hard behind the scenes on the opening plans and the promotion efforts as they relate to that. So we've been partnering with the city zoo staff and also with the Zoo Foundation and Square Park Zoo Foundation. And then with several of the the people who contributed to the fundraising efforts for that, to make sure that everything is ready to go. And when we can officially open, we can do that with the level of fanfare that's appropriate for the quality of asset that 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 really is. So we're pretty excited about about the potential of coming out of this pandemic and being in a much better place to celebrate and launch some of this work that's been done. And then you may recall that last time we presented, we also brought in some cellphone data research. We looked at twenty nineteen and sort of where were the feeder markets and where were people going when they came to the city? And we looked at all of that through aggregated data. Well, we've done the same thing for twenty twenty. One, to kind of see if those benchmarks from twenty nineteen held, but maybe more importantly in this moment, to see what the economic impact, to get some early indicators on the economic impact of COVID nineteen on the travel and tourism industry locally were. So we wanted to share some of that information with you as well. So we're a data-driven firm. We take a lot of our cues from data. We believe it's the best way to make sure that we're being good stewards of the public resources that are being put towards these efforts. So we want to show you a little bit of what we've been looking at, what we've been following, and how that affects some of the decisions that we've been making in in our capacity and role. So first, at a high level, you know, it was a rough year, right? Visit California is predicting a forty-three point seven percent loss in visitation statewide. That's higher than the national average, which is in the high thirties, thirty-eight-ish. And we're seeing that hotel room use or occupancy has dropped pretty dramatically across the country, thirty-five point nine percent compared to the previous year, when you're looking at March through November. It shifts a little bit to about forty percent, but not good in either, in either case, especially if you're in that industry. And as Americans look at their travel year, kind of looking forward into twenty twenty-one, there's still a lot of optimism. People are hoping to get about three trips in, which is pretty consistent with where people hope most years to be. Of course, they're thinking that's gonna happen a little bit further into the year as we wait for vaccines and things like that to be fully administered. But in the last week alone, about forty percent of people surveyed said they're daydreaming about leisure travel. So lots of folks are spending time online, looking at places they might go when the proverbial fog lifts, I suppose. So lots of people have travel plans in place. Many are betting on the July forward timeframe. So that's kind of an interesting indicator of where perception is driving reality. And then Americans who are interested in traveling are talking about the same kinds of places they were talking about six months ago. They want to go to scenically beautifully beautiful places, outdoor activities. They're talking about warm weather, beach destinations and resorts, national parks, places they can hike, places they can get to in a road trip without air travel. The things that would typically be competitors for us, big city attractions, amusement parks, things like that, not on people's radar, not affecting that. What that means for us is that when people can start to travel, we'll see more, a larger market share, we anticipate, than some of the places that normally would have welcomed those visitors in. So some good news and some bad news in that. And then in a measurement of pent-up demand, there's been a lot of trade media talk about pent-up demand, but when you really dig into it, about two-thirds of the people who typically travel are saying they're gonna go back to their normal travel. They don't have, they're not gonna do extra trips or travel more frequently. However, I'm sorry, about fifty percent of people will will do that, and about twenty-two percent will say, I'm gonna do a little bit more. I've learned that travel is important to me, and I want to do more. So there is some pent-up demand, but perhaps it's being overstated a bit at the moment. So in terms of what we've been monitoring, this is a chart that city staff has seen many times now. But we're looking at what people are saying they think will happen in the weeks ahead. And the reason we're looking at this is this is gonna tell us what they're comfortable doing next. And what you'll notice here is that it's been a pretty even split on people who think things are gonna get better and things are gonna get worse, right? There's always optimists and pessimists in everything, and that's certainly what we have going on here as it relates to travel. What we want to see happen is this blue line to rise above the orange line. We want more people to feel comfortable traveling again than than not. That's an indicator that they'll start making decisions that will get the industry going again. Now, we want them to do that in a world where it is actually safe to travel, it's important to say. But as we look at industry trends and when it makes sense to begin advertising and sort of resuming some of the normal economic stimulus activities that we would normally participate in, we want that blue line to be significantly higher paired with public health officials saying this is a good, you know, this is a good thing, that we agree that the public health situation is stabilized as well. You'll see there have been a couple of waves where the people who thought it was gonna get better and the people who thought it was gonna get worse have come much closer together. Those tended to be the areas where the world was starting to open up again, and then there would be like another wave, and you would see the gap open up again. And so there are a couple rounds of that. If you look on the right side of this chart, this chart actually ends about two weeks ago. We expect that while they're getting close together again, here, we're waiting for the final reports, but we're expecting these to separate again as the the news of additional variants of the virus are coming out. We think that we're gonna see another round of of gapping happening. But we're watching that very, very closely, because when the health conditions stabilize and the blue line gets above, that's when it's gonna make sense to start spending on things like paid media again. There are some things and some levers we can pull beforehand in terms of earned media attention and some of that, but we certainly don't want to be advertising before the market is ready to value that advertisement and act upon it. And and we want to kind of step into it in a moment that that you're gonna get some return on investment for the effort you're putting forward. So we look at this data through a number of different lenses. We look at openness to travel inspiration. So do people want to see what they can be doing? Are they out looking at places to visit and making sort of tentative plans in their head about where they might want to go when they can travel again? And the answer is about half of the population is. So on a score of one to eleven, six point one people responded to the question. At this moment, how how interested are you in learning about the new and exciting travel experience or destinations to visit? You know, people are interested, they're watching, but it's not everybody. There's still about half the population who thinks it's too soon, doesn't want to see that. Excitement to travel right now goes down a little bit. People are, you know, maybe excited, not willing, but some are excited and are traveling. And then excited and hopeful for twenty twenty-one travel goes up back up to the six point one out of eleven scale again. So again, you're seeing an average of that gap in perception, the optimists and the pessimists sort of weighing themselves against each other, and you're getting a midline average here. So in terms of other factors, vaccination is obviously a big part of this, family is another factor. So whether vaccines will be distributed to the general population, to younger, healthier people, to families, to children, all of that is affecting people's perceptions. So as you look at this chart, you'll see that there's many people who are concerned and say, I'm not willing to travel until my children are vaccinated. This is actually up from the last time it was surveyed. And as a mom myself, I was with the pediatrician last week, and that's when I learned that the children are gonna get vaccinated sooner rather than later. And so as new news is trickling out, it's affecting whether, you know, whether people are making decisions related to travel on this. Whether it would like you, be likely to stop you from traveling also is is about twenty percent, but that's down from the last time it was surveyed. So you're seeing that gap as people are pulling apart and leaning into whatever their inclination is. And then, you know, about a fourth of the population is saying, oh, I'd assess it at the moment, it's too soon to tell. Some people are saying they don't know. It's still a mess out there in terms of sentiment is the net-net here. So what does that mean for Eureka? So we looked at the twenty twenty data and we compared that to the twenty nineteen data, and we did that through a couple of different lenses. So as I mentioned, we did the cellphone research. So again, we pulled aggregate data from cellphone towers in the region, didn't look at anyone individually, but was able to look at the home location of the device or the work location of the device and pull out people who were from the city themselves. So if you live in Eureka or work in Eureka, you're here on a regular basis, your cellphone is pinging the same towers on a regular basis. There's a way to have the data make clear that that's your home location, right? So we took those people out. We're we're interested in sort of external influence on the economy and for the purposes of this, you know, analysis. And we looked at people who were from outside the area and how long they stayed and where they went when they were within the city. So again, at the aggregate levels, we're not looking at any individual person, but on average, what are people doing when they come to the city? Are they staying longer or or shorter amounts of time? So what we found was that visitation to the city by cellphones, which you can correlate to people, but is not an exact science. Some people travel without, some people turn off their location and that sort of thing. It was down about fifteen to sixteen percent, which compared to the state average and the national average is actually much better than average. But when you looked at room occupancy, we were seeing a very similar thing, so down about fifteen percent. And I think we saw in Mr. Millar's presentation earlier that TOT tax was actually up over estimations. So in some ways, we have not suffered as badly as others in this, through this particular lens. Also, a glimmer of hope potentially in all of this is that our average length of stay has gone up from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty. And we're also seeing some interesting things happen in terms of the demographics of people who have visited. So while we were not advertising in the last year, we weren't inviting people into the region in any forward-looking way. We were sort of in a holding pattern on that front. We did see that the visitors that were coming were staying a little longer, spending a little more, and moving around the city a bit more. And that was one of our goals for last year, and we can't take credit for that because we weren't doing advertising to move them around. I think social distancing did a lot to get people outside of just being downtown and seeing other things that the city had to offer. But a lot more use of the trails and the parks and by an audience that is a little bit more affluent when we looked at the census blocks of the feeder markets. So all of that told us that what's likely to happen is they're going back to those feeder markets and they're, they're gonna be talking about more of what Eureka has to offer. So some of the organic things that have happened this year are painting a picture of hopefulness in terms of the tourism economy of the future for Eureka. So while total travel numbers were down, at least according to the indicators that we could see, it, it was not all gloomy in terms of future prospects. We also, you may recall, we showed you this heat map in twenty nineteen. This is where our feeder markets at the national level came from. So where was the home device of the people who came to Eureka? Where does it generally ping? And you'll see it was lots of traffic from all over the country. One of the things that happened in the travel industry is people sort of abandoned airports for the for the majority of their travel regions, and they started traveling within a five-hour radius. This happened across the country, and almost all destinations reported that their feeder markets shift from being very diverse to a very concentrated chunk. That actually didn't really happen for you guys in the same way. It certainly condensed. You didn't have as much traffic coming from, you know, the Chicago region or the eastern seaboard. But if you look at this map, there's an awful lot of visitation from pretty far away during the last year. And and we've found that to be really interesting and pretty. And and we've found that to be really interesting and pretty inconsistent with with other places. Now, the west coast travel may have been driven by fires and some other issues that that made people travel a little further, you know, more serious consequences to balance as they were making their decisions. But but traveling all the way across the country during the pandemic is pretty unexpected and other locations are not seeing that in the same way. So it's interesting to us, but I think it does speak to the stickiness of the region. And then also that appeal of being in rural destinations in a moment like the one that we're going through as a culture. As we looked at the top feeder markets year over year, very little change. Lots of traffic from San Francisco, Oakland, San Jose, Sacramento, Modesto area, Chico, Redding, Los Angeles still remains kind of top of the list. Little bit of variance in some of our Oregon markets, but really pretty consistent year over year. So then we looked at how people were moving around the city and I sort of spoke to this a little bit already, but moved around the city a little bit more and but this had more of effect on the parks and the trails than it did on the retail establishments. So share of market shifted just a little bit here, but it shifted in the directions. We're going to want to see it shift year over year, moving forward when we get out of this current cultural moment. I see some people looking, so I don't want to switch too fast, but happy to come back to it as well. Okay, great. So so what does that mean in terms of what we have been doing? We haven't just been staring at the numbers, we promise, although that that is a big part of making sure we're making wise decisions in what we do. The Visit Eureka website launched last June. It continues to perform very, very well. So traffic is up fifty-four percent year over year. Total visits are up one hundred and twelve percent over year over year and page views are up over one hundred and sixty-two percent year over year. So more people coming to the website, staying longer, viewing more pages. And hopefully that is going to eventually turn into the right kind of travel to the city as well. And and more experiences when they're here, helping more of the businesses that are going to be in a recovery mode coming out of this economic impact situation. So place making efforts are also starting to bring the brand to life. So there was a effort this summer that is continuing on to fill vacant windows with art. So artists, fine artists were were paired with poets and use the hashtag resilient Eureka. And then those combined artist compilations were shared via social media as well. That's an ongoing effort. So even as soon as, I guess, the most recent one I heard of was about two weeks ago. There was a new window approved. So as business owners are willing to share their property access in this moment, we're taking advantage of that and pulling the arts community into helping us tell a story that is about the resiliency of this moment, but is also about people's very personal experiences in this moment. So hopefully it's a combination of sort of reality and the resiliency behind it, but also the hopefulness of what's to come. There's also been some organic efforts. Several of our council members, Bergell and Castellano in particular, have been involved in some painting projects, bringing the brand colors into into the real world settings. They did a big project in Ross Park earlier this year after the brand launch. So some fun, organic things happening in that regard. We've created some new banners for the visitor center, both internal and external. The internal ones are already up and on display, as you see in this picture, kind of up here on the right. The external ones are understanding or under production, in production, and we're waiting to be installed. So hopefully you'll see those start to come up here in the spring and they'll be bright and colorful and hopefully encourage more people to stop in when when we're encouraging people to to visit again. You're also seeing, starting to see some branded signage as it relates to social distancing and sort of good etiquette in this moment. We've also created some new brochures and rat cards that we'll be distributing as we're encouraging people to come into the town when the health officials say that's correct. And those brochures you'll see offer more of a diverse view of the community and what we have to offer than what we've had in the past. It's not just downtown attractions, but it's things all around the community. We're hoping again to get people, once they come up here or down here, depending where they're coming from, we want them to stay a little longer, do a little more and and really get to see more of everything that Eureka has to offer. So being very intentional about that kind of cross pollination of foot traffic and drive traffic. We've also started to apply with the cities, obviously help and and public works in particular, the logo to the city fleet of vehicles, to apparel that city staff are wearing. So you're starting to see it on communications that are going out to citizens. And all of that is starting to make it not a brand that Eddie Alexander made, but a brand that the city of Eureka owns. And so we're really excited to see that happening in a really natural way, despite the interruptions of the pandemic. We've also been working, especially over the last few weeks, on a number of beautification and wayfinding efforts. And we've been able to do that in partnership with a couple of organizations that have just been phenomenal to work with. So community services in within the city has been excellent. We have, we just worked with them yesterday on a grant application to get some new wayfinding signage for the waterfront trail as it goes through the downtown area and kind of winds and twists a little bit. We want to make it clear where people are and how they can continue on to the trail as they experience that. So hopefully that will all go through. We've been working with Public Works on a number of different initiatives as it relates to wayfinding, both getting to and and from the New Redwood Skywalk at Sequoia Park, the right ways to direct traffic in and out of the city. There's been a lot of attention to making sure that we do that in a really thoughtful way. And then also we've been looking at some projects welcoming people to the city through a couple of different avenues as we're expecting more drive market for the foreseeable future. We've also been partnering up with Project Eureka to look at banners throughout the downtown area, Henderson Center and some of that. It's a fabulous initiative that a couple of really amazing citizens have started and we're trying to lend our support in whatever ways that we can and to bring the brand into that project as well. And then we've been working with the Sequoia Park Zoo Foundation very closely as we've been thinking about the opening of the Redwood Skywalk. And they've been involved in all of the wayfinding as it relates to the zoo as well. So in addition to that, a little bit less exciting maybe, but very, very critical to the work that we do. We've been building a photo library that has a really clear rights trail as it relates to location releases and model releases and making sure that the city has ownership and rights to all of that. So it's a little bit more logistical and administrative. But we've also been building up that library with a real attention to greater diversity of places and people that are shown when we're showcasing the city. So we've done a couple of these photo shoots throughout the last few months. They've been delicately handled because we can't have just a big group production over three days the way we would normally knock it out with an account like this. But instead, we've been doing it, you know, a family or a person at a time. And Emily on our team has has been doing a phenomenal job under really complex circumstances, making these productions happen. And there's actually a volunteer call out right now. So if anybody's watching and interested in being a model for any of these photos for this photo library and meaning that those photos will be used to promote the city of Eureka into the future, please email her at, contact us at visit eureka dot com, we'll get you into the queue. But we are excited to be working with so many citizens in showing off what Eureka has to offer. And then new brochures and rat cards prepped for spring release, hoping, hoping, hoping that we can start to return to some level of normalcy by spring. But we'll see, you know, vaccines, health variants, all of these things are getting calculated in, but we're just trying to stay optimistic. And then tourism advertising continues to be on hold. We're not running digital ads. We don't have billboards saying come to Eureka right now. We hope to get back to a place where that makes sense, but in this moment, it doesn't make sense. We're continuing to manage media relationships through one-on-one conversations. We're starting to think about virtual fan tours instead of invitations where we bring writers in or journalists in to experience what we have to offer so that we can get ahead of stories that we want to have placed into the future. But but we're being very delicate about the when and the where so that we don't have stories dropped before we're ready to get more attention on the city from people who are anxious to travel. So it's it's all a bit of a delicate dance, but none of that is unfamiliar to any of you guys. So I did want to point out a couple of success stories as we saw them from the last couple of months. So on Thanksgiving Day, there was an article that ran in CNN. I don't know how many of you guys saw this. I know a couple of people did because some of you were quoted in them. But there was a story, a lead story on CNN, when you opened up the CNN app on, at least in Virginia where I was, on Thanksgiving Day, the lead story was the story about indigenous people across the US wanting their land back and the movement gaining momentum. And there were lots of stories about cities that were struggling with this. And there was one story about a city that got it right. And it was the city of Eureka, California. And I literally leaped with joy. I was so excited to see it. And we we knew it was coming. We had, we had participated in providing some photos and organizing some quotes and things like that. But it was really fun to see it up in such a prominent place and to see the final story, how Eureka was being held up. I know there was lots of conversation today about where there's room to improve and diversity and inclusion are such critical things in this moment. But it really has struck me as someone who works with communities all over the country that Eureka was doing this before it was cool, that you guys have really taken this seriously, that it's very organic to the ethos of the community. And it was fun to see CNN recognize that. They don't often pay attention to smaller communities. And so it was, it was pretty cool to see that. And I wanted to make sure that your citizens saw that as well. It's also worth mentioning that we looked at the coverage views just of this one digital application. The website traffic for this story saw more than half a million people read this article just online. So that ignores, you know, video views, that ignores print applications and distribution of it. It ignores the app. This is just the online website. So lots and lots of people saw this story. So it wasn't just that we got a great story, but that it got really good reach kind of around the country and even beyond that. So we talked a little bit about wayfinding. On the right here, you saw some of this in the brand book. It was sort of an idea about how some of these metal structures that have wayfinding on them around the city can be leveraged for wayfinding. We have started working with the city to build out the plan for each individual one and what we're going to promote where. And the city is working to get those produced and implemented. So we're hoping that you'll start seeing these around town in real life, not just as mockups in a book in the very near future. Again, we'll try and correspond that with as the city is opening up for tourism. Again, we want to make sure that we've got our our bright cherry face on, but that'll be good for citizens as well, right? This is a place that many of our citizens walk and and drive and experience every day. So it'll be nice as we're all coming out of this pandemic moment to see a polished face forward on some of the structures that maybe haven't been updated in a while. I mentioned the waterfront trail grant and some of the art. This is not final art for that, but just some quickie mockups that went into the grant application. But we are trying to figure out how to use the Victorian element to start giving directional signage and more brand exposure as people go through the community. And then down on the bottom left here, this was an idea that our team brought to the city leadership team, the staff leadership team and and public works in particular and said, hey, there's been all this talk of signage and welcome signage to the city. Does it need to be a metal structure or could it be landscaped in? And so we did a couple of different mockups with mulch and stone or with bushes that have been trimmed into the shape of the new logo and learned that there's a lot of complications in terms of making sure all the various stakeholders are on board. But Brian Gerbing, Director Gerbing and his team immediately went to work on this, began getting quotes for it and worked with Caltrans to get approval. And we just heard last week that they have gotten that approval. And so we're beginning to put kind of finalized plans in place around how we might be able to use this idea to bring some signage that's organic and easier to maintain and a natural to the environment, somewhat natural, it'll be shaped, but but made of natural materials to to the landscape along the highway coming. This is planned for northbound on the one oh one. And then we've run a couple of mini campaigns over the last six months. The dine out Eureka campaign, you may be familiar with. Again, Emily Kirsch has been running around partnering with restaurants, providing table tents that talk, talk to showing off your support of local restaurants. So we've had a hashtag campaign around dine out Eureka. Ask people if they're picking up food or if they're dining outside or, you know, whatever the restrictions of the moment are, if they're supporting local restaurants to brag about it on social media. We've provided prizes for people who are using the hashtag on a regular basis and we're encouraging and providing the table tents for the restaurants. So that's been an ongoing campaign. It will continue as long as we need it to continue. And we're just trying to lend our support locally for the businesses that have been working so hard and the restaurants have been particularly affected and had to navigate a number of different jumps and hurdles here. So this is one of the ways that we're trying to to lend some support in this moment. And I've been pleased with the pickup. Mayor Seaman had Good Neighbor Week again this this year, so not a major lift or effort on our end, but we did help support that with a new logo and some video editing. We also partnered with Humboldt County and the City of Eureka and several other organizations on the Shop Eureka Local Holiday Campaign and supported that with some radio ads and some print and digital ads and that sort of thing. And then this is just kind of a fun story, but I think it it shows the spirit of the team and just how excited everyone is to be working with with the city. There was a trending post on Reddit of this woman who had never been to Eureka from Colorado, who had seen a picture of the Pink Lady and was inspired to try and make a gingerbread house out of it. And she had used her COVID lockdown experience to get better and better at making gingerbread houses. And she ended up with this beautiful replica of the Pink Lady. And it started trending on on Reddit. And so we happened upon it and reached out to her and said, hey, we'd love to do a feature on on you and the Pink Lady and introduce you to the owner, the Pink Lady. And so we were was able to do that. It was a, it was a fun project to work on, but more importantly, it got tremendous pickup. It brought more than fifteen hundred new people from out of the area to the Visit Eureka website. And it got about three hundred social shares just on Facebook alone. So the the organic reach of stories like that can be pretty significant when you're talking about getting the attention of someone who maybe doesn't want to be advertised to, but is is interested in seeing what you have to offer. And what a great way to show off the beautiful architecture that you all have to brag about. So that was kind of a fun project for us and it was holiday themed, which was extra nice. And then, of course, the Redwood Skywalk is coming soon. So we are waiting on a couple of last administrative things that have to happen for, you know, building permits and occupancy permits and that kind of thing. But we are getting ready for the launch and then kind of in a holding pattern to get approval from a safety perspective related to COVID. But as soon as we can open that up, everyone is really excited to do so. There are a number of of different kind of phases of that launch. There is the Redwood Skywalk one hundred, which is a fundraising effort that will be kind of the first people up on the on the walk. And then there will be some customer experience testing where the zoo will be doing, just making sure that they can keep people socially distanced to get some initial feedback on what's working, what's not. And then there'll be some kind of grand opening event. Again, and all of that is kind of COVID dependent at the moment. But but we are getting ready with branding materials and promotional materials that we hope to to launch in the very near future. So everyone keep your fingers crossed and hope that we're all on the optimistic side of the spectrum as it comes to that first chart, that ribbon chart we showed you early on. So what does all of that mean for kind of what we're doing now, what we're going to do in the future? And then what we're going to do as soon as we can? This is my my new normal chart. Usually we give a timeline, Gantt chart with specific dates and COVID has turned everything on its head. So we can't quite do that. But there are some things we're doing now. We're working on social publishing and search engine optimization of the Visit Eureka site. All signs point to that has been working very, very well and we're going to continue to do what's working there. We're developing more itineraries and content that is going to provide more deeper views into what the city has to offer and an easier way to navigate around. And we're watching length of stay on the website to make sure that we're not just putting more stuff out there, but that that stuff is really engaging people and moving them through the experience and helping them plan visits that are meaningful and economically impactful on the community. We're also continuing to watch and analyze sentiment to determine when to pull some of these next levers into the second and third columns here. We're continuing to partner with community organizations, if that makes sense, related to key initiatives and continuing to support the city on citizen communications where that is helpful and supportive as well. We're continuing to keep citizens updated via city newsletters, as well as some activity reporting for key groups that shared with us very early on that they wanted to stay close to the project. So if you remember, there was a survey before the branding effort even really got going to ask the community about what was important related to this contract to them. And many people asked to stay up to speed on what we've been doing. So Emily's been doing a good job of keeping them up to date without spamming them, but, you know, giving them regular updates on what we've been up to do, up to and doing. And then building out that photo and video library. All of that's happening right now. As soon as we can, we want to launch this Redwood Skywalk and welcome people up into the trees. We also want to begin local advertising as it relates to that and the customer experience surveys to make sure that that world-class asset is is really rolled out with as much sophistication and perfection as as possible. Then we are also hoping to introduce overnight visitor communications within that kind of five-hour drive market again as we start to open up the community when it's safe to do so. We're looking at more community engagement activities. We're very eager to do more of the things we originally thought we'd be doing pre-COVID, but that timeline yet is yet to be known and a little bit further out than some of these other issues. But that timeline yet is yet to be known and a little bit further out than some of these other issues. We're also hoping to collaborate with more of the community groups on digital advertising strategy. So the way a lot of digital advertising works is that you bid against other people on the keywords. And so when we think about bidding on things like the keyword redwood or vacation or things like that, every group in the area who wants tourism may be bidding on the same words. So we want to make sure we're collaborating and not bidding up the price against each other and what's sort of hurting everyone's efforts. So we're hoping to do a little bit of collaboration just specific to the keyword strategy. So a little bit nerdy in our world, but we're pretty excited to dig into that. And then community interest groups and fan tour planning. Some of this will be in person, but more likely in the short term, it will be virtual planning around key interest areas. So perhaps we'll do a virtual fan tour around places to eat and the foodie kind of experience in Eureka. And we'll reach out to food and travel writers related with materials that they can write stories on, even if they can't quite get to Eureka yet. But again, we want to time that in such a way that they can get to the city that that they're writing the story at a time where we want to welcome people into the city. So we're watching all of those data points and and levers pretty carefully. And we're looking at OTA engagement for digitally bookable assets. So we want to make sure things like the Redwood Skywalk are easy to book when you're planning a vacation to the region. So if you're booking a hotel online, that you can also book some of the things there are to see and do. And there's some technology drivers behind that. So we're working with the city's IT department and a few other folks, community services and the Zoo Foundation and some different groups to make sure that all the pieces are in place to make that happen and to make that happen in a economically sustainable way. And then we're looking at digital reputation management outreach efforts. So early on in the contract, we pointed out that there are some issues there that need to be addressed. Time is helping to heal some wounds. It's not fixing everything, but until we can get tourism coming back in a steady rate, it's hard to kind of move that over. However, we are working with the the Zoo Foundation and the customer experience testing for the Redwood Skywalk to try and start to build some positive digital reputation around that asset right from the get-go, which will help counterbalance some of these things as well. And then when we reasonably should, we would like to launch a welcome back campaign with digital advertising and perhaps some environmental out-of-home advertising as well. But again, time dependent and we're still waiting on a few levers there. In-person media influencer fan tours, pretty significant digital advertising where we can target the key markets that we've now learned through the cellphone research are driving pipelines of people that are desirable audiences into the community for economically impactful visits. And then our media marketing and promotion will be an ongoing focus because you can get a lot of the bang for your buck there. So all of that said, I just threw a lot at you and I know it's been a long night. Are there any questions I can answer for you?
I'm actually wondering, Jennifer, because I want to make sure we're able to have a robust conversation about this. And I don't want people to feel rushed and we are already over the time we said we would stay. And could we bring you back to the next meeting and we can put you early in the agenda and have the conversation part of this? Unless unless you guys want to go on. So I just want to make sure we're not we're not rushing through this because I think that it's worth having a conversation about. So any feedback from council on that? Councilmember Bregel.
I would be a fan of bringing it back earlier in the meeting next time when we can have more of a robust conversation because right now it's already, what time is it? 10?
Yeah.
Now there are other things on the agenda as well. So I just feel like, you know, I don't, I don't know about you guys, but I don't want to be here till 11:30 or 11 even. So I'm a fan of postponing it. Oh, we still have council reports too.
So we have a lot to think about. This will give us some time to sort of noodle over it and then come back in two weeks with more questions. And and have a good conversation, but I don't want to rush through it and not have that conversation because people feel like they're moving on. Did you have something?
Oh, I'm just wondering, Jennifer, if we could get, this is a great report, if we could get a copy of it between now and then. And that way we could have a chance to take a look at it and have maybe even more questions or things to talk about.
Sure, absolutely. Happy to do that.
And quick question, just thinking about bringing it back and scheduling it an earlier point on the agenda. I I guess I would love to pick up where we left off, but it does feel a little. If someone was joining that meeting and they had not seen this presentation, it might feel a little bit like they don't know what we're talking about. So were you picturing Mayor Seaman like a really shortened version of that or or picking up with that last slide about what's next and then talking about it from there? What were you thinking?
I was thinking of picking up where we were going, but if you wanted to do an executive summary. I don't know how you do an executive summary of such a comprehensive piece. I think that the now, as soon as we can and we reasonably should, is probably a good place to start. And in our promotion about the meeting, perhaps we can attach this as well so that people can catch up before they tune in.
That sounds good to me.
Okay, I'm just trying to be a good steward of everybody's time and and also make sure that we're you know, exploring things the way we should. So thank you for coming and I know it's really late where you are. Rest well and we will see you in a couple of weeks. We'll put you in the reports up in the front, probably by the mayor's reports too.
Okay. And thank you to Bob and Emily too.
Yeah, thank you to all of you. I'll see Emily on Friday. The rest of you in two weeks.
Wonderful. Thank you guys so much for the time. We appreciate it.
Thanks. Bye bye. It is also, so it is 10:07, seven minutes beyond when we said I would also recommend maybe postponing the CSSET update unless there's a timeliness that's needed for it, a city manager's lottery.
Uh, no timeliness and Leonard, I'm sure doesn't have to study for his masters anymore, so I'm sure he's okay with it.
Congratulations. Job. Proud of you.
Master of Business and Organizational Leadership. He's coming after my job.
Nice.
Not a chance, Miles.
The things he learned was you don't want Miles's job.
If that's council's wishes, that's fine. I'd just give a quick update on Hatcher and then we can move to council reports.
And is everybody okay with that? That seems okay, that's what I would like to do. So
Could we put the CSSET update also at the beginning with the Eddie Alexander thing?
Sure.
That'd be great. It does feel like CSSET often gets to be last and it's like the community just doesn't hear about it as a result.
That is a good point. It is always nice to have them. We've had them a couple of times upfront, right before public comment, which has been very productive because then people do hear it and I like that.
It's also because our meetings back then weren't going for four and five hours.
Yeah, they they used to be much quicker. All right. So city manager Slattery, would you like to make a report?
Just a quick update on Hatcher. So to let council know and the public know. They have been working on getting property owner approval for the alternative site. I haven't heard back from on that and they are working with a new insurance agent. And so they haven't been able to provide them with any insurance. So both the sites that are currently available are still in limbo. And we've had preliminary discussions about alternative sites and if anything comes out of that, we'll bring it back to council. That's all I have and can't wait for the council reports.
Thank you very much. So we will do council reports. If you have anything that you would like to report this time, raise your hand and I will call on you, council member Castellano.
I'll be quick. First, just congratulations again to Sergeant LaFrance since you were here for so long on the meeting. I just think it's, yeah, I appreciate all your work for the city and and all of your leadership and endeavors to get your master's degree while also working a very intense full-time job. And then attended a bunch of meetings. I won't go into them, but I'll try to do some sort of update. But I do want to say this coming Thursday from 6:30 to 8, I'm holding a just a meeting for anyone in Ward One who wants to talk. And this, this is a little bit preparation for the strategic visioning process. So if folks want to, I'll be talking more about what that process is and then also just hearing folks' thoughts on it. Yeah. Okay, that's fine.
All right. Who else has a report for council report? Scott Bauer, did you have something?
Yeah, thank you. I I I too attended a bunch of meetings last month, but I just wanted to bring up one that I we had a meeting, the city staff put together a presentation on the Beta Zoo Trail and the kind of the state of that. And we had eighty-six, I think, residents from the ward and from other areas attend. And it was great. There is some concern about where the alignment is and it's still preliminary. But people are, for the most part, very interested in in seeing seeing this trail come about. And I look forward to, you know, bringing it back when we further down the road on the on the plan and implementation of it. So very cool stuff. Thanks.
Very nice. Anybody else for reports? I see Leslie forgot something.
Sorry, I just, just so many of us attended the Every Student Succeeding recognition. And we haven't gotten to talk, got to talk much about kids at this meeting. So I just want to say there's some really great kids in Eureka that are working so hard to, you know, go to school and and do wonderful, wonderful things during this difficult time. So just cheers to them and to the Eureka City Schools for putting that together.
Councilmember Maltin.
I was there at that one. And of course, the kids are inspiring and amazing. The thing that really struck me during the Every Student Succeeding meeting was that the teachers and their like deep appreciation for the real struggles of their kids and what they picked out as the things that were remarkable. You know, somebody just, one student just being able to attend a Zoom class was a huge accomplishment for that student. And that teacher recognized that and they were sort of articulate about why. I'm just, I was really blown away by some of the great teachers. I just wanted to report that I did the, attended the League of California Cities Orientation Conference Super Concentrated Academy for new new council members and mayors. And it was a big education and thanks to the city for sending me and Councilmember Bauer to that. We got to listen to the lobbyists and the lawyers and the planners and everybody had their their different session on what we should be focusing on. So it was definitely a good overview. And boy, so much about the Brown Act that I didn't know. I just, I had written myself a note that I wanted to point out that this is a very hopeful time. And at the same time, it can be a very difficult time for a lot of people. And as we are looking forward to going back out into our community and being together in person, that this might be a good moment to check in with folks that you haven't talked to in a while, check in with people online. Mental health and mental health maintenance are very important and can be really difficult to talk about. And a lot of people could be struggling right now. So your kid's friends, your friends, your your neighbor who you haven't talked to, just this is a good time to be deliberately making connections on purpose around our community. And one more thing, fast healing to fellow council member Arroyo. I I'm thinking about your paw and hoping it stitches up quick.
Thank you. I was worried that people would think I was raising my hand. I'm just elevating it. I don't have anything to add, but thank you.
Is that your report? Councilmember Bregel, you have anything on your way out? No. Okay. Well, we'll look forward to seeing you guys in two weeks. Oh, wait, was that a wait? Yes.
Yeah, I don't want to be the only one that doesn't talk.
Well, I asked you if you wanted something.
Let me think of something. No, actually, I just wanted to, I just wanted to remark about what Sharon had said earlier when we were giving our reports. And I actually had two people that I wanted to acknowledge, but I thought Jim Howard would be the best because he was a city council member. But I just wanted to just mention two people that were really impactful in my life and I'll do it really briefly, I promise you. But Marvin and Ella Lowry, my Ella and my mom were in the same room together when I was born. And when my mom died, Ella kind of took me under her wing and and, you know, kind of tried to direct me in certain ways and they were, they were great parents and I really appreciate them and all they gave me having not a lot. So I just wanted to say that. That's all.
Nice.
Thank you.
Well, with that, I will adjourn the meeting and we will see you guys all in a couple of weeks.
Thank you.
Bye. Thank you, everyone.